Board. To order. First item on the agenda is a public comment period. We have four people scheduled for public comment. I will take them in order. First speaker, Joshua Levy. Please approach.
Thank you.
Joshua Levy, I'm speaking only in my capacity as a town meeting member. I just wanted to comment, make a request actually about your, the TIF forbearance agreement that's currently on this evening's agenda. And I just wanted to ask that you consider approving the agreement subject to town meeting ratification. I think town meeting is very interested in this TIF and it has been in the past when it was discussed and voted on by town meeting. And I think that it's always within the select board's discretion to put things on the warrant, even if it's not required of the select board. So I think it would be of interest to town meeting and I think that it would just further the transparency of this particular agreement to making sure that people are aware of it. So like, that's my question. That's the only reason I'm here tonight.
Thank you. And we'll be discussing this agenda item later on.
Thank you.
I know you don't want to come down. Josh, I thought I'd just say briefly.
I hope that you'll stay for the full discussion of the issue, but some of the folks here might not be or watching on TV. The TIF agreement is complicated and like a lot of complicated agreements is subject to different kinds of pressures and changes in this environment. Unexpected things that have happened. There's one view which you've described, which is to have a fuller process to revise what to look at. The change is another is to say that in the press of all the businesses and all the difficult things, and in this case TripAdvisor has been a good partner with the town and has upheld all of its, the core obligation of the TripAdvisor to the town, which is to pay its full property tax bill according to the adjusted schedule that we agreed to and the town meeting approved at the beginning. It's fully in place and we expect that they're going to be on earth. So to that extent, the question is, is this a big enough thing that it should really be held for town meeting? Or should we allow people to have a reasonable agreement and move on? You know, it's something people can disagree about and Mr. Chair said more discussion later, but I just wanted to flag that now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, typically during our public commentary, you don't take comment from the board, but tonight I expect to give some latitude. In that regard, so thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Fox, I think he is coming in. I see his name via Zoom.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. I didn't know I could go in person. I would have been there in person. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk about the TIF forbearance too. You know, I know it's super controversial when this TIF was passed. I hear people keep bringing it up and keep bringing up, you know, the NBC building. And I am just incredibly disappointed that this negotiation took place without finance committee involved, which to me, $10,000, $20,000 is something that finance committee should be involved in. It's unclear to me who on the select board was involved. Was it just the town manager? It just feels and reeks like a backroom deal. And where this, where something has been so controversial, I think we need to go over the boards with transparency. So I was so disappointed watching the finance committee discuss this in their meeting last week that they didn't know about it. They didn't hear about it. It was going to pass through unanimous consent at a select board meeting, something important like this. I don't know if it definitely has to go to town meeting, but it definitely should have had finance committee involved before this was agreed to. They should have bought in. And, you know, I read the letter from the town attorney and I just, I see letter after letter right now from the town council, which just feels like they're not necessarily representing, trying to find out what's right or trying to represent the town. It feels like they're trying to protect town management and town leadership and it just disappoints me. So I would just urge you to let the finance committee involved in it. Let them vote on it. This should not be something that just resides in the select board. It's too important.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And again, we will be discussing this later on. I just do want to clarify, and this isn't a rebuttal to you, but for those in the audience who have not yet voted on this item, it was not under consent. It was at one time and was taken off. We're going to discuss it potentially voted this evening, but thank you for that. Third speaker, I have Lance Robert Brown also via Zoom. And I do see he's here and coming over. Mr. Brown?
Hi, I was just added as a presenter or a panelist. Thank you. I am speaking on a similar topic. I, I don't want to repeat the things that others have said. My, my comment is on the forbearance agreement is that as a, I believe I'm a current town meeting member, though I'm not sure how that works with the redistricting. I am on the ballot or will be on the ballot. Anyway, I, I am concerned that town meeting ought to have the, the option to decide whether to deviate from the terms of the TIF that were, that were put in place with, with town meeting consent. I did also review the town council's rationale and, and I thought that documents related there too was, was pretty broad. And, and you could pretty much do anything with that. So I also ask that the select board seek town meetings ratification of the agreement. Not to take anything away from the negotiation that happened. I think that makes sense for a negotiation to happen in advance of presenting it for ratification. But, but I, you know, as a town meeting member would like the opportunity to discuss the, the terms of it and, and ratify if that's the consensus. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Brown, for joining us. Last speaker, Jeff Heller. See via Zoom. Okay. And I do not see him in the audience. So that will. It is, yes.
Actually, it's just a comment about, to the members, if we could consider moving back up to Towers Hall next week, that'd be great.
Okay. Mr. Ruddy, thank you. So that will end our public comment period. And before we get to select board transition, I do just want to note the passing of Ricardi. We are all deeply saddened. He was a dedicated member of the library board for 11 years. Town meeting member at large. He was an active member of the Needham Historical Commission for 14 years. And I actually remember him. I sold the house to him. Actually, he was just such a gentleman. So I had that one-on-one discussions with him in connection. And I just remember him being a gentleman and a real person who was all for the town. So he contributed greatly to our town. We will, we will miss him and just our prayers and condolences to his family. And I just offer that moment of silence. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the select board transition, which we have a 15-minute window, but I don't think it's going to, I think it's going to be a little bit longer than that. We did that and we did that in order to surprise one Mr. Matthews, who will not be running for reelection, as everyone in this room knows. And we just want to thank him for his service and all that he has done to the town. And for those on TV, I don't know if you can see it. A lot of times you're focused on us, but the room is full. I think in honor of Mr. Matthews, otherwise this room would most likely be very empty. So, Mr. Matthews, I think you can take some comfort. All the people here from you and watching on the Zoom call. So I know we have quite a bit of people who wish to say something. And I see, first of all, Senator, Senator Rush is here. If you would please approach or stand up just so the microphones can pick you up. That's great.
Oh, here's right. Here's the microphone.
Great.
Great to see you all.
Great to see you.
I am, I am deep, deeply honored and privileged to go first in this long line of people who I know are going to say glorious and wonderful things. Well-earned and well-deserved, Dan, for your incredible service to this town in so many different capacities over so many years. On a personal note, I have learned so much from you in my comparatively much shorter tenure in service to this town. And so I, on a personal note, I'm just deeply grateful to you for everything you have done, all the wisdom you have imparted on me and so many others. As we hope to advance your legacy of service to this town. It is my deep honor and privilege to bring you a citation from the state senate, which I will read briefly as part of the job description. Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts senate hereby extends its congratulations to Dan Matthews in recognition of 27 years of dedication and service to the town of Needham. And be it further known that the Massachusetts senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the president of the senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the senate on behalf of all of us in the state senate, especially myself and Senator Rush. Congratulations on your retirement from this board and, and thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Next speaker, we will have our town moderator, Michael Fee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and greetings to all the members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here and I appreciate the invitation to speak about one of my favorite people in the world, Dan Matthews. I, I, just a couple of observations. So, you know, Dan has been a selectman for 27 years, which is longer than my tenure as moderator. He was on the school committee before that, when I was on the finance committee. We've worked together, I must say, for decades. And Dan has always had one bedrock principle, which is his belief that what he's doing will advance the interests of our town. And I have great respect for him for that. I, you know, Dan is a great guy. We have a couple of things in common, which is, I just wanted to observe. We have a common law school and a common graduation date. Both Dan and I attended Boston College Law School. And Dan graduated Boston College Law School in 1977 and I graduated high school in 1977. So I didn't want to, I, I just didn't want to let that go. I, I thought, I thought it was important. But on a serious note, there is one, Dan has done so much and we could go on. And I know you have quite a line of testimonials, but I, I just wanted to single out one point because it's fresh in my mind. We recently had a, a meeting of the Minuteman Regional School Advisory Committee. Mary Ann was in attendance. And this is something that Dan put together at a time when the operations, the finances, the perception of Minuteman was a bit of a mystery. Minuteman's profile was not really what it should have been in our town. For that reason, I think central to Dan's concern was not just fiscal oversight, which many of us ex-finance committee people like to talk about. But I, at his, at his core, he was most concerned, I think, about the availability of this resource for our town's students. And over the course of the 15 or so years that Dan has put together this committee, the level of information has improved and Dan's commitment to that school has been on just stark display. And I think that was recognized when the school had its grand opening, Dan was singled out. He was a speaker at this 195, I think, million dollar projects grand opening. And he was credited with marshaling the support from the member towns that was necessary to make this resource available, not just for our town, but for all the towns of the district. The result has been a dramatic increase in the number of students from Needham who are attending Minuteman and benefiting from the projects there. It's one thing Dan has done, but it's one thing that has impressed me greatly. And I think the, the town owes him a debt for a lot of his actions. But I think that one in particular strikes me as really very laudable. So I'd like to thank Dan for his service. It's been a pleasure. John Bullion and I spoke a moment ago, and I think Dan may have given John some, some, some currency because he said, how are you going to control Dan Matthews to five minutes if he gets elected as a town meeting member? And my, John can, John can attest that my response was, oh, I've done that before. So I'll, I'll just leave you with, there's, there's a quote attributed to Winston Churchill, who said, we make a living by what we get and we make a life by what we give. And I think, Dan, no one in this room, no one in the town should doubt how much you've given to the town. It's appreciated and you've left your mark. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruddy, for those comments. Next, we'll go to Colleen Shaler, former select board member, served with Dan. Colleen, how are you? I know, right? There'll always be a place.
Maybe I'll run next time. This is a very sad night for me, Dan, as you well know. You know, it really, I tried so hard to convince you to stay. I really did. Dan and I have worked together actually for 10 years, three years on the Board of Selectmen, but seven years when I was on the school committee with him. And I find that in every case that the integrity that Dan uses as he approaches something and the dedication to the town and Needham and its citizens is just unmatchable. And I was very proud to, to be able to work with him and strange as it may seem, although I am a year or two older than he is, he's always been my mentor. And I do appreciate that, Dan, and good luck with everything. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Next, we have Mr. Handle, former select board member, former chair. How are you? See you as always.
Thank you. Feels kind of nice on the side of the table. I've served with Dan my entire tenure and I have never met a more dedicated public servant in my life. Dan had a detailed knowledge of how government works and he loved government. And we all used to wonder, why is Dan talking so long on these issues? And I wondered about that for a long time and then I came to a realization. Dan was teaching the public the detail of those issues so that the people who watched these meetings had a clear understanding of what we were about. So people will talk about transparency, but Dan exemplifies transparency. And the only request I would make of the board is that a good recording made of Dan's liquor speech and his welcoming of new police officers and that instead of anybody else making those remarks, that be played and now with the new technology should be able to be done. So Dan, I wish you the best and good luck in the town meeting race.
Thank you, Mr. Handle. Next, we have Mr. Bullion. Former select board member, also former chair, what, twice? Who's counting? More than that. Oh, I was trying to keep you young.
Four times.
Four times. Okay.
Yeah. So I'm going to need 18 years right now. So I know we're limited on time. Dan, Dan ran my campaign in 2003, when I ran for the Board of Selectmen at that time. And, you know, to echo some of the comments that have been made before me, Dan is a man of incredible integrity. He cares about the town more than anybody can imagine. You give long speeches, which, which I always enjoyed until I was at home watching. And it's like, wait a second, I don't have to watch these. I can, so I started taping the meetings and then going through Dan's speeches, which I knew well, and you know, I mean, having heard them many times. I do want to jump back to Michael Fee and just say, I'll be curious to see, as hopefully a reelected town meeting member, how this plays out at town meeting. If Dan gets elected five minutes, that'll be interesting. But it's been my pleasure to serve my entire 18 years with you, Dan. You know, we really, we, we did good and you did great and all the time that you put into this town. And, you know, people don't realize the integrity that everybody on this board serves with and, and the caring. And, and that's what it comes down to. When you're sitting on that side of the table, the people that I've known sitting on, on that side of the table have been people that care about the town deeply. So as much as people are critical, and they have been, and we know that because we heard the criticisms and the complaints, I would always try to make it clear to people that we care. We may not agree sometimes on issues, but we care. And we all did. And everybody in this room that's here to celebrate you cares and really, you know, it's just an amazing run that you've had, Dan. And.
A lot of help.
Well, it's, you know, it's a teamwork. It's a team approach and we all know that. It's, it is a team approach. So thank you for all the work that you've done. Going to see you on the other side. And, you know, look forward to seeing you. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullion. I see Representative Denise Garlic is here. And I'm sure she has a lot to say. Representative Garlic, nice to see you.
Thank you very much, man. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So I do have a lot to say, but I hear that we will roast and toast you on April 29th. So I will be very brief in deference to all the businesses board needs to take on. But Dan, I did want to take a moment to say, speaking on behalf of our community, I wish to express our deep respect and our gratitude for your public service. You are an extraordinary role model as an active, knowledgeable, caring and committed citizen. Martha Gelman said, and I quote, citizenship is a tough occupation, which obliges the citizen to make his own informed decision and then stand by it. And there, Dan, as you have always demonstrated, then work hard for it. As a citizen of our town, of our Commonwealth and our country, you have devoted thousands and thousands of hours to study issues and concerns, to chart paths forward and to navigate until goals were fulfilled. In these very unsettled times, in our town, in our Commonwealth, in our country and in the world, we need good citizens willing to think, willing to work, willing to lead. And Dan, you are most honestly the best citizen I know. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Representative Garlic. And last on my list, I have Mr. Healy, former select board member and chair. Say two times?
Twice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleagues on the select board, town manager. Dan, congratulations. Wonderful accomplishments. I do want to point out a couple of things. It is nice that we have a fellow Needham High School graduate still toiling away. And I think what it means is that you know where this town came from. You know what it's going to be. You helped make it to be a better place. But you never forgot the people that grew up here, that lived here, that first made Needham. And I've always thought that's a great characteristic of someone who wants to lead a town. Know where you've been, so you know where you're going. I'd also like to say that I've had the privilege of, of knowing and working with Dan since the 1980s. And my service on the finance committee and then joining him here with the, with the select board. There were some fantastic accomplishments, if you don't mind, that I'd like to mention. Dan was the driving force behind the Community Preservation Act. He struggled once or twice, didn't have everyone on his side at the beginning. In the middle, they were kind of there, but Dan, you convinced them. And I wish I had the laundry list of projects that the CPA fund has brought for the town of Needham, all without additional taxpayer dollars, all without additional overrides. Second, we have Kate. Dan was the driving force behind the Town Manager Act. And I, and I don't think Dan gets enough credit because again, that was stalled once, if not twice. But through your persistence, you got that thing passed. I'd also like to talk about a broad 20-year of accomplishment. Starting in the year 2000 up until now, I could be mistaken. And now that Emory Grove is going to be done, probably it is now. Every single building in this town has been renovated or rebuilt. That's a tremendous accomplishment. And I know it was a team. I know John was there, Mo was there, Jerry was there, Jack. This board's been here, but you were there consistent. You were there from the start. And I think the town owes a debt of gratitude for you for all you did on that. I want to finish with a personal reflection. So when you were running John's campaign, remember, there was another, there was another guy who was on the ballot that year.
Who was it?
It was a vote for two.
I don't recall any sign saying that, but. So I went to a coffee up in the, in the section of town, the Mitchell, kind of the, the side by where up between Harris and where Mitchell was. And I gave my spiel, you know, why you should vote for me and this is something I've always wanted to do, Needham born and bred. And this older gentleman at towards the end started peppering me with questions. Had a bit of a Maine accent, which I didn't quite place. And at the end of it, he stood up and he goes, I think you're going to be good. I think you're going to be all right. And when you, when you do get elected, I want you to work very closely with that guy, Dan Matthews. And I said, I'd be happy to do it. He said, because you know what? He's a great guy. That was Dan Matthews' father. The dad was right. Everyone here is right. Dan Matthews, if there was a mayor of Needham, I'm voting for you.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Thank you for all of those heartfelt comments and all true comments. And I should just, for my comments, I echo everything that's been said because it is all true and extremely touching and right to the point. But what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to members of this board and just go down the line and of course, express our appreciation and gratitude. Anyone, Kevin?
Sure. I'm the newest member of the board, but I may know Dan perhaps longer than you realize. I worked on one of his first campaigns with my brother back when I was, I think, in seventh grade. We were leafleting houses. Apparently no one wants to do the job, so we got to do it. But it's been clear that Dan loves a job. He's good at the job and he loves his town. So thank you for everything, Dan. You're awesome, Kevin.
Marcus? Thank you, thank you. I was the newest member of the board until very, very recently. I think from when I first began the journey for running for select board and the conversations I had with Dan and the support that he gave me right before the election and the email that he sent out and every, I would say, every week or so, there's a text. Want to meet up? Want to have coffee? And he has been consistently, you know, guiding me, but not telling me what to do by any means, but guiding me and giving me information and giving me resources and years of knowledge. And there, there's not enough words to say how grateful I am for what Dan has done for me in the short time that I've been on this board, very short time. Because he has empowered me to want to be greater, to want to be more. And though we haven't agreed on everything, everything that he's done and echoed, people have said, has been in the best interest of what he thought was going to move the town forward and what he continues to do and what he will do when he's no longer on this board. But my gratitude and my appreciation for Dan, and he knows I'm going to continue to bother him for as long as I'm on, on the board. I will continue to reach out and continue to have coffee and to continue to take his advice. And I think, I didn't know it when I first started this, but the friendship that I've been able to, you know, cultivate with Dan is one that I'm truly grateful for. And I'm just super appreciative in this town. Cannot be, I think, more happy and more proud to have had you and, and continue to have you in it. in it.
Thank you, Marcus. Mary Ann?
So, Dan, we're gonna have the time to toast you more at the end of April. But I will just say that echoing everything that's been said, right? We go back a long, long way. Dan has been supportive from the very beginning. We met doing overrides. No, we didn't. We met at Hillside with our girls back at the beginning. And I am grateful for all those years, for all those beaux-mots that I've been able to pay for it and say, "Well, Dan says, or this is what you need to know about this." And so, in the words of Mary Oliver, I'll say, "What will you do with your one wild and precious life? I'm gracious, grateful for the decades of your precious life that you have given to Needham, that we have all benefited from." And now, I'm gonna say, "Well, we've had a few wild moments." I'm gonna encourage the wild and crazy part going forward. You're due. So, thank you, Dan.
Thank you all. You know, it's crazy to think, Dan, that you and I, well, I've served the longest together on this board now with the new board, and it was great to hear people who have served with you. But, you know, going back, we've talked a lot about dates, right? 1995, the moderator mentioned the years. You know, I graduated in 1994, so I think I voted for you. And of course, you're on the school committee when I was in school. And just to mention, you know, you were steward, like everybody, you were steward moving this town forward. And I wouldn't be here where I am really without you and your stewardship of this town and just making it such a terrific town. You're always willing to take the time to meet for coffee, to give advice, solicited or unsolicited, but it's always welcome. And I also think about all the things, and I know Mr. Healy was mentioning, all the things you've been through before this, since I've been on the board. You know, we were a dry town at once, right? And you have the senior center that you helped get through. And of course, Minuteman was brought up and all the host of things that you helped along the way. And you were always the go-to guy for many of those subjects, especially, as was mentioned, Minuteman. And of course, any of the alcohol licenses or regulations that we have to make sure that all, you know, Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Your dedication as far as every event you would come to, meetings, I don't know if you've missed a one, honestly, I guess you can tell us, but I don't ever remember you missing a meeting in my tenure on the board. That type of dedication, I think, is, you don't see that type of dedication. And as we said earlier, you really did everything in the best interest of the town. I will say, you have almost this intuition that afterwards, we started, I said, "Dan nailed it." I remember there were a couple of applications that came through, and you might say, "I feel a little iffy about this." Like, "No, you know, we'll see what happens." And then, yeah, he was right. Like, "Dan was right about that one. Dan was right about the..." "Dan, you should ask this question. Dan was right about that one." So, you had that, you had that intuition that you brought to the board, and not only just your experience, but just your knowledge and just your gut feeling was so respected. And, you know, we're all a team, but I always figured that you were really the coach of this team. And it goes, we have Team Needham, and it goes a long way, and people really look up to you for what you've done. So, you've shown me what a member should be. I find you as a mentor. I find you as an inspiration. And I wouldn't really be here if it wasn't because of you and that leadership. So, heartfelt to you. Thank you for everything you've done. And I think everyone said it best collectively. And I know you won't be going away. You're just a call and a cup of coffee away, but we will all be calling you to get some advice. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
I have 10 seconds, Mr. Matthews.
In order not to exceed the moderator's limits of debate, I tried to shorten this a little bit. So, if I had to kind of peek at my notes, I apologize. You know, yes, I did, I grew up here in town, and that's a basic thing for me. And Harris Schoolboy makes good, even though there's not much Harris School left. Joint town meeting in 1974, the school committee in '76, and to this board in 1994. It's been a long time with a lot of ups and downs, but a lot of good things and good work, too. Some of it are big things, learning to work with the proposition two and a half environment, earning public support for major investments in schools and public facilities, and making the change to Town Manager Government, which has been a huge difference for the town. We have good neighborhoods, strong business and commercial sectors, excellent public schools, public safety and other town services. And people have worked together to make, no one person makes those things happen. It's the work of the whole town. We've addressed difficult issues on affordable housing. There's more work to be done, but we've made a lot of progress and much more to be done on race equity. We've made a lot of progress in my time, but not as much as we should have and more to be done. But all of this effort is aimed at having Needham be a good community where people can live together as neighbors. The last few years have been tough in a number of ways, but we're doing well. We've weathered the storm pretty well, and this is a good time for a change. There has to be change, and so let's make it change for the better. The challenge when you're trying to improve things in a community is to fix the things that need to be made better without losing the good that you've got. It's a lot, it's easy to say and harder to do. A core piece is you've got to stand up for your own principles, but you've also got to listen and work together with others. Working together, that's how we can make sure that the town is well-run. I want to thank all of my family, all of the people that I've worked with over the years, both those that are present and those that can't be. Resident, staff, town meeting members, past and present members of this board and others. I never like to list people as individuals because you always leave somebody out, but I do want to thank one person by name, and that is Kate Fitzpatrick, our Town Manager, who during my 27 years on this board, has not only been an extraordinary contributor and leader to the town and a friend to the town, but set an example for every one of us in public service. I appreciate having the... I appreciate having had the opportunity to participate in the town's government, and I'm grateful for the friendship, the guidance, the support I've received over all these years. And I hope that my work has been a positive contribution to the town and its people and affected positively concerns beyond our community as well. Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming for that. I do see Bill Dermody, he's representing the Memorial Park Trustees, and Josh Levy from the Finance Committee, who didn't speak, but are here as well, Dan. And I will give a minute for the, going to clear. You may leave. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. We're doing some accounting, you know. Thank you. Okay. We'll wait 10 more seconds, and then we'll get this back in order. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Audit Presentation, Scott McIntyre, Principal Melison, and Dave Davison, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Finance. Good evening. Nice to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. As the agenda notes, Alina Korsak was gonna be presenting, but she had something that came up tonight, so a face that is familiar to the board. Scott McIntyre is going to make the presentation tonight. He does have a PowerPoint to go through to keep folks' attention, particularly people at home that follow. I would ask, because they're very much involved in the process, to talk about members of my team, Evelyn Peness, Roger McDonald, and Michelle Valancourt to also join. Welcome. So, Mr. Chairman, another point is, as the board knows, there's a goal that we have to have the audit done and completed within 180 days from when the fiscal year closed. This year, that did not happen, in part attributable to COVID-19, and everything took much longer to accomplish. Or I could say, because this is the last scheduled meeting of the Select Board, that I didn't want Mr. Matthews to leave without having such a presentation. So, with that said, Mr. Chair, I will turn it over to Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, David. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the invitation, members of the board. I've been doing this job for a long time, and I know when there's a big crowd in the room, they're really not here to see me. That's become clear over 34 years of doing the type of work that I do. So, as the Finance Director, Assistant Town Manager said, I'm substituting for Alina tonight, who had a family issue come up. Her name's still on the PowerPoint. I didn't even bother to change it today. I'm gonna walk through this. It'll tell you some of the highlights of the results of the audit, as opposed to walking through a, you know, a number of key pages in the financials. Certainly can try to answer any questions that you may have on particular account balances or issues in the financial statements. But, and if we could just go to the next slide, please? This talks about the reports that are issued. We have issued three reports to the town. One is our opinions on your financial statements. That's the first bullet item up there. The opinion is on the financial statements. It is not on the internal control structure of the town. We do do a lot of test work on the internal controls, but it is not an opinion on internal controls. The second report that we've issued is a management letter. That includes our recommendations. I'll talk very quickly about those in a few minutes. In the last bullet item up there, the last report that we've issued to the board, you know, we call it a governance letter. I'm not going to walk through it, but I can tell you the highlights. There are really three main key communication items that we are required to report to what we in the audit world call those charged with governance. One talks about, really in general, how the audit went. And again, our audit, as has for a couple of years, several years now, our audit here in Needham has gone very well. That means we found the books and records to be in good working order, key accounts reconciled on a regular and timely basis. And as a result of that, we did not need to propose any significant audit entries to your general ledgers in order for your financial statements to be fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The second of the required three communication items deals with if there were any disagreements in how to apply generally accepted accounting principles between the town and our firm, and there were no disagreements in how to apply generally accepted accounting principles. And the last of the required communications that's present in our governance letter to you folks deals with accounting estimates. There are several in your financial statements. The two largest and most significant are your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. We'll touch base on those in a little bit. But they are estimates, but they are actuarially determined. You hire experts in the field. They follow standards and actuarial sciences to come up with those accounting estimates that are present in your financial statements. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about the audit process. As the first bullet item indicates, we perform a lot of procedures. That's a fancy way of saying that's all the test work that we do. We test payroll. We test accounts payable. We test the receipt process. We test your bank account reconciliations. We test your receivable reconciliations. And we look at all of the accounts and how the financial statements come together, and we look at the financial statements as a whole. The middle bullet item is, again, just a quick repeat here, we express an opinion on your financial statements that are the responsibility of the town. The numbers that you see in the audited financial statements, they tie right back to the town's accounting system. These are your financial statements. It is our opinion that your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And I really touched base earlier on the last bullet item there, where it just focuses that our opinion is on the financial statements and not necessarily the controls. But please, we want, you know, you folks to understand, we may not be giving an opinion on internal controls, but that is a key element of what we test. As I said before, we test accounts payable, we test payroll, the receipt process, and the overall how the entire financial statement document comes together. On the next slide, we talk a little bit about the rule-setting bodies. First bullet item really deals with, you know, the body that sets the rule by which you folks here in Needham do your accounting and financial reporting. It's known as GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, nationwide body that sets the standards for all states and local governments in the United States. So, there's comparability. They have designed generally accepted accounting principles so that all governments use them in financial institutions and credit rating agencies, then have a bedrock of principles to judge the creditworthiness of communities and judge comparability between two different communities. The next bullet item down is really our standards. We follow generally accepted governmental auditing standards. We actually follow both that set of standards and what is known as generally accepted auditing standards from the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. They're very similar, but there are some differences in the standards, and those are the rules by which we do perform our audit by. We do put up here the last bullet item, you know, a lot of the town's general ledger is maintained in accordance with UMAS, or the Uniform Municipal Accounting System, which is promulgated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. It's similar, too, but it's not, it's not full gap, generally, gap being generally accepted accounting principles. There is some convert, there are some records that are maintained in the general ledger that help through the audit process to convert certain key accounts from a modified accrual, which is the basis of accounting that the Department of Revenue requires, over to the accrual basis where applicable for generally accepted accounting principles. On the next slide, just real quickly, in the financial statements, this is a kind of a real snapshot of what's included in there. As our first and foremost is our auditor's opinion. As indicated up there, there are unmodified opinions, sometimes referred to very plainly as a clean opinion. As I said before, in our opinion, your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The word unmodified is a technical one, meaning there are no modifications to our opinion to your gap or generally accepted accounting principles, financial statements. Right after that is your management's discussion and analysis. It precedes the numbers pages. It precedes the balance sheets and the operating statements and things like that. And it really highlights to the reader, it puts the summary into words, not just in numbers. And the town does a great job in its management's discussion and analysis. You can read either, you know, at your leisure, go in there and understand why certain key account balances may have changed. It's really a great tool for your financial statement users to be able to look at your MD and A. After that, it comes to the number pages that I referred to. And keep in mind, there are dual perspective financial statements in here. That doesn't mean there are two sets of books. You have one set of books that are presented on the long-term basis of accounting. That's the government-wide financial statements. And the more short-term perspective, you know, a lot of readers still go to the short-term perspective. They look at your general fund, and they want to look at fund balance. That's really important stuff, as most readers still go there. But the long-term financial statements, the government-wide, that includes where you have your bonds payable, your capital assets, your net pension liability, and your net OPEB liability. And there's some really important information in there as well. And last, you have your notes in what we refer to as RSI, or Required Supplementary Information. The standard setters have said that in addition to all the notes, they want some required supplementary information. And a lot of that is budget versus actual comparative schedules, as well as schedules you get from your actuaries showing you the funding status of the retirement system here in Needham, as well as your OPEB liability. And the next series of slides just deals with some of the key account balances to the members of the board and those that might be watching at home. This is a four-year trend analysis of your unassigned fund balance in your general fund. If there's one place that most readers turn to in your financial statements, it's your general fund balance sheet, and they focus on the unassigned fund balance. and they focus on the unassigned fund balance number. Just working on the column on the far right, that's 2021, or as of June 30, 2021. A combined balance there between your general fund and your stabilization, which are presented as a single fund for GAAP purposes or generally accepted accounting principles purposes, have a balance there of about $28 million. It's down just a little bit over the prior year, down about $750,000 over the prior year, but still represents, as we put in quotes here, from your fiscal year 2020 opinion from Standard and Poor's, it represents a very strong fund balance. And that certainly remains the case here as you closed fiscal year 21. And on the next slide, it's a very similar slide. It's just that S&amp;P and others will often look not just at what the dollar value of your fund balance is. They will look at the fund balance as a percentage of your operating expenditures. In other words, essentially, how much do you have in a reserve account as a percentage of what you spend in the general fund on an annual basis? And you can see, again, in that last column of numbers, you have slightly more than 15% of your fiscal year 21 expenditures in your fund balance, similar to the dollar value, which is slight decline, but still a very strong financial position for the community. And on the next slide, the next slide really summarizes budget versus actual results. The first column of numbers here is, of course, as it's titled up, is the budgeted amount. You have your revenues, transfers in, and use of fund balance. Use of fund balance, really, another term for that would be when you appropriate free cash or use free cash as a financing source for various appropriations, your expenditures and transfers out, and of course, you have a balanced budget there. Middle column is the actual results, and if the unassigned fund balance is the first place that most readers go to, the variance column between your actual results of operation and your budget amounts is probably the second place. And you can see here, just going down from the top, revenues came in greater than expected by a little bit more than $3.8 million. A lot of that was from penalties and interest and taxes and some various charges for services. And I'll skip over the, both the transfers in, as it's not really significant. And use of fund balance, again, I mentioned that's the use of free cash. That's when you're drawing on existing cash in your reserve, so it's really not a current revenue stream. And then you have your expenditures, who are significant turnbacks and budget surplus from the appropriations provided to the various departments of almost $6.2 million. And I think at least $1 million of that came from the school department, and almost $1 million, I think, came from your various public safety departments as well. So there's very strong budgetary results. If you just take the $3.8 million and the six point, almost 6.2, and combine those together, you know, almost $10 million there. Really strong budgetary results for fiscal year 21. The net change, of course, is almost break even, shows a positive $134,000. That's because you used, or you did use, $10.3 million of free cash. So you used it for various things. Mostly, it was used for capital projects, which I know the board is very familiar with. On the next page, we just get a quick series of slides on some of the long-term liabilities of the community. This is a three-year trend analysis of your bonds payable, and for those that might be trying to tie it in with some footnotes, this does include any unamortized bond premiums. So if you were looking at some of the footnotes, these numbers wouldn't tie directly with those numbers. The last couple of years, the total bonds payable has been fairly consistent. But perhaps the best measure here, and again, this comes from when S&amp;P reviews your financial statements, they don't always look at just how much you have outstanding in bonds payable, but they look at how rapid of a payout you have. And Needham pays off about 66% of its bonds payable over a 10-year period, which a rating agency would consider that to be rather rapid, and it is considered a positive credit factor for the community as well. And on the next slide is just a very quick trend analysis of your net pension liability. If I happen to use the term NPL, it's simply an acronym for your net pension liability. And this is the town of Needham's proportional share of the unfunded liability of the Needham contributory retirement system. And you can see, as of June 30, 2021, the year-end liability, it's maybe a little hard for some folks to see there. The year-end net pension liability is a little bit less than $74 million. That certainly sounds like a lot of money, but I think perhaps the, one of the things that I could have added here is that, to make the slide even more meaningful, is that your retirement system is 73% funded, which is one of the better-funded systems in the Commonwealth. So while it may seem like a rather large liability, please know that it is one of the better-funded systems in the Commonwealth. And on the next slide is a very similar slide, only dealing with your net OPEB. And OPEB is another acronym for the Other Post-Employment Benefits. And by other, they mean other than pension, and more specifically, retiree healthcare is what OPEB really stands for. And similar to your pension liability, it's been somewhat unchanged over the past couple of years. And as of June 30, 2021, had a net liability of $69 million. I think it's important to point out that, similar to your pension plan, your OPEB plan is about 47% funded, again, one of the better-funded systems in the Commonwealth. You had some really positive actuarial experience during fiscal year 21. It should be noted, too, that you also decreased your discount rate from the expected future earnings of the trust fund from 7% to 6.5%. And if you're going to drop that discount rate, you would expect to see the liability go up. You actually see it going down because of some very favorable actuarial gains that you received during the fiscal period as well. So again, while the number for the net OPEB liability may seem large, you have a trust fund with about $60 million in it, and that trust fund is about 47% funded. So on our next slide, we just talked a little bit about our management letter. We had three comments this year. One is a quick follow-up on some, a prior year comment dealing with updating of various policies and procedures, one of those being for uniform guidance, formalizing some IT plans, updating your departmental receipt policy, and also, not so much a policy and procedure, but adherence to, you know, sound internal controls is removing retired employees, their access on a timely basis. Our second issue was also a follow-up, is to improve the reconciliations of your overpayment account, overpayment liability account. There was some really nice progress that was made on this during the fiscal year. Wasn't completely resolved, but as is written in the text of the comment, the homework that still needs to be done there deals with about a $55,000 account balance. So it's not an overly significant account balance to the community. And our last recommendation, I mentioned the standard setters earlier, is GASB, or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Recently, they've been issuing a lot of standards lately. The two most recent ones are their Statement Number 84 and 87. 84 was implemented in fiscal year 21. They provided us everything that was needed to be incorporated into your GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles, financial statements. And now it's a matter of taking that and incorporating it into your general ledger. GASB 87 deals with leases, and it redefines a lot of things. The accountant here heard me speak about this to one of the associations in the Commonwealth last week. I won't try to get into it in any detail. I certainly took an hour and a half to get into it last week. I'm not going to do that. There's a lot of, is there some amount of homework here? And David and I were talking about it before we came into the room, and I'll give him a call about it in the coming weeks. But there may be some homework that the town needs to do, where the old term, some of you may remember, capital leases and operating leases, and your capital leases have always been accounted for and operating, which we kind of forgot about. You may need to go back and look at some of these operating leases, and maybe they need to be recorded on your financial statements. Where in the past, to date, the accounting standards haven't required that, but that will be a change. And so that really, on the next slide, that's a very, very quick overview of our audit of your financial statements. Tried to hit on the key points in terms of talking about your unassigned fund balance, net pension liability, OPEB liability. Again, while those numbers may seem on the surface rather large, and they are, they are, you are on funding schedules, and you are on, you are one of the better-funded pension plans and better-funded OPEB plans in the Commonwealth. So with that, I will try to answer any questions that the board may have.
Great, thank you. And our pension plan, our OPEB plans have really, that's been a goal of ours over the years, to increase that funding. So it's nice to see where we stand versus other towns in the Commonwealth on that. Just a question before, but first of all, I want to thank the team in front of me, Roger, Abby, Michelle, Dave. Thank you for all that you do, and it's a, it's a report. There's always things we can improve, but it's a terrific report. Looking at COVID and kind of looking back and looking at the other towns you serve in Needham, are we, where do we stand in our position, how we've dealt with our finances, and how has that really affected what you've seen out there?
Well, your Finance Director talked a little bit about it. We're usually here, and the community usually does publish the financial statements within the 180 days. Most communities like the town of Needham. I would, you know, make sure I would clarify that to say, sort of, your peer communities have always adhered to that. Needham's not alone in having things be delayed a little bit this year. One, because of COVID, probably, again, I wasn't the engagement partner, so I don't know all the details, but some of my clients that I am the engagement partner on are having some staffing issues right now, and there's just a lot of strain in certain organizations, and it's just delayed, some dotting of the i's and crossing of the t's to get the report published.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. All right.
No, it was great. It was great reading.
Yes, thank you for all this, and those recommendations seem, what, a little bit tedious? The last one, the gay ass. Yeah, I see there to.
They're not tedious at all.
Just watched the hour and a half.
Michelle, I'm sure she recorded it.
It will be on it, so we'll be. Yes, it's riveting. Well, we look forward to doing that. Dave?
Mr. Chair, just leave the comment that we do not disagree with any of the recommendations that the auditors had, and we are, of course, going to move forward with implementation. As Mr. McIntyre said, 87, it's interesting, they changed vocabulary and interpretation of the way that you view contracts. Ironically, it will have an impact on the school department, more so than town departments. So, which I have been conversations with the School Business Administration in preparation for that, as has Michelle.
A lot more work in documentation and much more timely in terms of providing information to us and giving a little more thought to service agreements that they enter into and how they're structured.
So not tedious at all.
All right, thank you again. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. So motion move the appointments in the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Oh, yes, discussion. Mary Ann?
We do have an extension of the town manager's contract on that consent agenda. So I do want to note that we've done this, that we've had a discussion with the town manager, that, as was mentioned earlier this evening, we're all grateful for the town manager that she is here. And I do note that in a state that has more than 20 openings for town managers, that we look forward to retaining Kate's services. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you again for your work, Kate. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Impose, that's unanimous. Next item on the agenda, Babson College Scholarships. My alum, as you know, Mary Ann, and I know you made some good choices, so.
Did you get a Babson College Scholarship back in the day?
I don't think it did, or I did not know about it.
They've been around for a long time, I know. So just so that everybody on the board does know, the Babson College Scholarship is a scholarship that Babson offers to residents of the town of Needham, and they similarly offer one to residents of the town of Wellesley. But in this case, we're talking about residents of the town of Needham who will be students at Babson, either undergraduate or graduates. This year, I don't believe there's any graduate students on the list. This particular grant, as the town scholarship, is a grant that's in excess of the financial aid grant that the college makes to them. So they go through the regular financial aid process, and then this town scholarship is added on top. We do take a look at voting to approve the scholarship awards to the applicants. And so I just want to say that we are grateful to Babson, and I know that the families that receive these are, in fact, very grateful to Babson for the additional support for their students.
Great. Thank you for your work on that, Mary Ann, in reviewing those applications. Is there a motion? The Select Board votes award the town and need Babson scholarships to the following applicants as listed in our agenda fact sheet. So move. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Just to say again, my appreciation, I'm sure I speak for everybody. This is a great program that Babson has had that's helped Needham students for many, many years, and it's great to be, that they're continuing it and expanding it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Next item on the agenda. We've got Amy. ARPA Economic Development Grants and Program Update. Kate and Katie. We'll put you on for next. Sounds great. Take care.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. ARPA Economic Development Grants and Program Update. How are you this evening?
Anything good.
Anything, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will first start and call your attention to the spreadsheet, Initial ARPA Funding Proposal 322. Just to frame, that we're looking at the economic development bucket. We told you we would come back with some thoughts on round two for small business grants. So we are only making changes that are highlighted here in red. So for the grant program, that $460,000 is $260,000 that was already committed in round one. So the proposal tonight is to have $200,000 available for round two. That would leave the $20,000 committed for public art and $20,000 in other. But before you take a vote on that change, I will turn it over to Amy to talk through her thinking around round two eligibility changes.
Sure. So I'm pleased to announce that, or share with all of you, that the feedback from the small businesses has been overwhelmingly so, so appreciative. And so I wanted to pass it along because I had the pleasure of being able to reach out to them and share the good news. And it was, I felt like I was, I said it was like publisher's clearinghouse in Santa Claus and. So I have to say that it absolutely is going to make an enormous impact. So I appreciate very much your support of the prior funding. And so, as you mentioned in a previous meeting, that you were open to a round two, so here we are. So we did make a few tweaks to the program. They are highlighted in yellow in the memo in front of you, and it's basically just to really clarify the eligibility criteria for the businesses. This did not really change anything that we did the first time around, but it just made it more clear to let them know that, you know, for example, if personal property taxes were owed to the town, that that would be something that would not deem them eligible. That's not to say that they couldn't become current and then, and then apply. So it was just providing some clarity. And in addition, we wanted to open this up to Needham nonprofit organizations. With the organization being focused, its mission being focused primarily on the community of Needham, so that 50% of its program services or expenditures would be coming back to the town of Needham as opposed to being a national organization that just happens to be located here in Needham. I felt it was really important to ensure that these funds that were directed to this community stay within this community to benefit, you know, the residents and the businesses. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Just a couple that I had, then, Mary Ann. The net revenue change, can you just describe the change that used to be clearly gross, and now it's net? Is that because you felt that some businesses were not qualifying because of their gross revenues were too big?
It was just a little unclear. It just said annual revenue. So some businesses were, then came back and were asking, you know, did you mean net or did you mean gross? And. And, and again, wanting to be able to help as many businesses as possible. So that, so that was just a point of confusion. And like with anything, you do it the first time, you learn a few things and you want to come back and you want to, you know, tweak those things to, to make it just easier for everyone to understand.
That's great, because I did speak with a couple of businesses and I thought they were too large for this program. And I said, that didn't make sense to me. And I, I think it must have been the gross and that confusion.
And interestingly, no, I did have a few conversations with some businesses that did not apply for round one and I asked them specifically why. And one of the responses I got actually a couple, from a couple of businesses was that, well, we wanted the funds to, we, we thought there were other businesses that were more deserving than we were, that we didn't throw our hat into the ring for this because we thought that perhaps they should go to other businesses. So the outreach, I'm going to even, you know, take to the streets and walk around and hand to hand flyers to some of the businesses that I didn't hear from round one to make sure that they know about this.
Great. Thank you. Mary Ann?
I was just going to observe that I am really grateful for all the listening that was done because I do feel like we learned from round one and we've sort of modified to be more inclusive in some ways where organizations in town who missed or were not able to be part of the first process, I know are looking forward to this process coming forward. That will be a good thing.
It'll be great. It's terrific program. For the comments?
Yeah, just, so are businesses allowed to apply again or just once?
They are not.
I just wanted to be sure because I, I see that we're doing this and adding to it with the nonprofits, which I think is great. I just want to clarify.
Right. So if you received a grant in round one, you would not be eligible to apply in round, round two.
Thank you. Thank you for all of this.
Great. Any further comments from you? None. Okay. Is there a motion? That the board votes will approve $200,000 in ARPA funds for the Small Business Grant Program Round Two as shown on American Rescue Plan Act Funding Proposal dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Is there such a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye. Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you again for all of your work.
Thank you very much.
Chair, if I may, just one other, two other updates. The last page is the report from our accounting department, which will bring you essentially monthly, just to say what the budget was and what's been expended. And I also wanted to report that we were very fortunate that, as you know, we have two sources of revenue. The, the direct to Needham through the state and from the county. And last week, the county approved our request for funding for the Walker Pond Program. So in the amount of 356,000. And just as a reminder, we had originally thought that that was going to be funded by CPA funds. So that really helps take the pressure off the CPA for that. And then we have also filed for the reservoir cleanup at the, which is a dredging project similar to the Rosemary dredging. And we are working through a series of questions that the auditors hired by the county have asked us. But again, it was assumed when we did the design for the reservoir project that there would be some, at least some CPA component to that. And we're hopeful to pull that completely out of the CPA. So if we were able to do that, that would be almost two and a half million that could come off of the CPA requirement. So we, we, we believe, we've had early indications that the reservoir project is, it will comply. And so we will work through those questions and see when that can get approved by the county.
That's great. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks again.
Thanks very much.
Next item on the agenda, DHCD Zoning Regulation Presentation. Katie, and I see we have Lee Newman and Karen Sonnaborg. I don't see them here, so I'm assuming they are coming to us via Zoom. Is that correct? Yep, I see Lee and Karen coming over. Good evening, Lee.
Good evening.
Nice to see you. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening.
So clearly you can hear us and we can hear you. And with that, Katie, the floor is yours.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Miles, if you could run the slide deck for me. So while that's being pulled up, I think everyone is aware that in early of last year, the governor signed a broad economic development bill and one component of that was a requirement that MBTA communities of which Needham is one, have a zoning ordinance or bylaw in place that provides at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. The statute, and Miles, you can go to the next slide, please, was explicit about a few things about those, what would be required of that zoning district. So the housing cannot be age restricted. It must be suitable for families with children. The zoning must allow for at least fifteen units per acre. Google tells me a good way to visualize an acre is about three quarters of a football field, if that is helpful. And.
Twice my yard.
Okay. And the district must be within a half mile of a transit stop. The statute also lists three state funding sources that communities would not be eligible for if they're not compliant with this new requirement. And I could talk about that a bit more later. Beyond those elements, the legislation really is deferring to the Department of Housing Community Development as the state agency responsible for fleshing out the details and determining what communities actually have to do to comply with these regulations. That is really where we are today. On the next slide, I'll start going through. DHCD has issued draft guidelines for what it would look like for communities to achieve compliance and further defining things that might not have been fully defined under the legislation.
Katie, could I, part of why you're covering this with us is that it is a requirement of the legislation that we all be briefed about this.
It is.
So this is why we're all.
Since you're briefing. So there'll be a very satisfying check mark later on in terms of things we need to do that we're accomplishing right now. Yes. Yeah, and this is quite dense. So yes, please, I think, feel free to stop me along the way. Something's not clear. So I'll go through the draft guidelines. I'm going to turn it over to Lee to talk about our initial zoning analysis for Needham. And then we have some recommended next steps, some that are required of us and some that we're encouraging. So the draft guidelines, DHCD defines multifamily as a building with three or more units or two or more buildings on the same lot, each with more than one unit in it. And you all know this, I imagine, but as of right means that our land use boards cannot require special permits. They would still have site plan review available to them as a tool. And that's an ability to look at very discrete items in a development proposal such as traffic flow and public safety concerns. But beyond that, there would be, the developer would have the ability as of right under the zoning. On the next slide, this is the most dense, so I apologize for so much text. But the DHCD had to further define what does it mean to have a reasonable sized district? And they decided that they were going to create two thresholds. Communities must meet both. The first threshold is a minimum land area in which they're setting at, districts need to be fifty acres at a minimum. Twenty-five of those acres must be contiguous and no part of those fifty acres, if they are not contiguous, can be less than five acres in size. The second threshold is a unit capacity minimum. The underlying principle DHCD is applying here is the idea that if a community has public transportation available to it, that the responsibility to create opportunities for multifamily housing development around those transit stations, kind of the responsibility increases at a percentage based on the type of service. So if you're a community that doesn't have transit at all, but you are adjacent to one, your unit capacity would be ten percent of your existing housing stock. That requirement goes up if you're commuter rail community at fifteen percent, bus service twenty percent, subway service at twenty-five percent. This gets a little complicated around what, how we are currently defined. But I'll say right now, DHCD is defining Needham as a bus service community. So twenty percent of our existing housing stock of eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-one units means our minimum unit capacity would be two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight units. I'll put a finer point on that unit minimum is not a housing production requirement. It is looking at what is the zoning? And once you factor in setback requirements, height restrictions, floor area ratio, anything that defines the overall use and size of the building could generating this number of units be possible? So it's not about what do you ultimately build or what is already built? It's what is possible under the zoning. On the next slide, actually, could we go back one miles? Great. Perfect. And the legislation is explicit that the density of the zoning district must be fifteen units per acre. DHCD added in their guidelines some flexibility, which says that that can be an average. So you could have overlays with, within this district where some areas are more dense and others are less as long as they averages to fifteen units per acre. I want to call out the last bullet on this slide, which is if you take that fifteen unit per acre density requirement and you multiply it by the minimum land area of fifty acres, you get a threshold of seven hundred and fifty units. That could be confusing because people have dueling sense of what the unit, overall units they need to achieve. I'd just say, communities have to achieve all of the requirements within the draft guidelines. And so practically speaking, that means if the seven hundred and fifty figure is higher for one community than the unit capacity figure, they have to achieve seven fifty. For us, it's that two thousand three hundred and change number. On the next slide, in terms of what suitable for families means, the zoning cannot place age restrictions on the units. It cannot restrict the size of the units, the number of bedrooms, the number, the, the size of the bedrooms or the number of occupants. In terms of proximity, proximity to transit, DHCD again is providing some flexibility in the guidelines and saying that twenty-five of the fifty acres have to be within a half mile of a transit station. This will come up again in our recommendations for future action. But under the current guidelines, a bus, a bus station is defined as the intersection of two bus routes as opposed to a bus stop. And so when we talk about our, our Needham analysis and what we think this, this could possibly look like for the town, we think about two things that we're not sure that a district built around a bus stop, that's not a station, would count towards this proximity to transit goal. And we'll talk more about some prime locations where we already have a lot of multifamily housing development that certainly fall outside of a half mile of transit that we would hope DHCD would have us include to meet this requirement if possible. On the next slide, just a handful of miscellaneous items. So in the guidelines and in the statute, there's nothing about affordability requirements, but communities may apply inclusionary zoning if they so choose. Again, no housing production requirements. Because we're counting the number of units that the zoning makes possible, the districts can actually already be built out. It's, and again, you'd be counting the underlying zoning towards that unit capacity. Mixed use development is encouraged. And lastly, the determination for compliance would last for ten years unless town meeting in that interim fundamentally changed the zoning to bring us out of compliance. So with that, I will turn it over to Lee Newman to talk about our initial zoning analysis.
Good evening, every, good evening, everyone. So we wanted to make it, we wanted to determine how Needham would fare under the draft guidelines that Katie just described. So we conducted a zoning analysis. So on the screen, basically you see the map, which basically shows the radius around Needham's four commuter rail stations, a half a mile radius. So Needham basically has four Massachusetts MBTA stops, basically at Needham Center, Needham Junction, Hertzey and, and in, in, at the heights. And this map is basically showing the half mile radius distance around each of those commuter rail stations and the zoning districts located within each of those radii. And the reason we wanted to look at this was because we wanted to look at what the zoning rules were in each, within those, within those zones to determine if the land use profile that those zoning districts enabled was compliant with the draft DHCD guidelines. So the map also shows, I think, the location of the fifty-nine bus route, a portion of which is shown basically in the black dots. So if we can go to the next slide. So this is basically a summary table and it details the zoning districts where multifamily housing is permitted within a half a mile of transit, either by right or by special permit. It gives the district acreage, it gives the district density and it gives the district build out potential. So presently, only one zoning district permits multifamily housing as of right within a half a mile radius of transit. At the minimum, DHCD required density standard of fifteen units per acre. And that is the A-one apartment district where multifamily housing is allowed at eighteen units per acre. And we have three apartment districts meeting this density standard, namely Rosemary Lake Apartments, Rosemary Ridge condominiums at fourteen acres, the Highlands, I think at four acres, and Hamilton Highlands at four acres, for a total of twenty-two acres. Two of these districts that left as independent entities would fall below the five acre minimum land area requirement found in the draft guidelines and would need to be adjusted. But currently, the multifamily build out density for the twenty-two acres located in the A-one apartment districts totals three hundred ninety-six dwelling units. And I think with some tinkering would be eligible under the draft DHCB guidelines. Needham also has four commercial districts that permit multifamily housing development either by right or by special permit, also within the half mile radius at the density standard. Actually, Needham has it at eighteen units per acre and the DHC that density standard is fifteen units per acre. And so these three districts comprise Needham, the Needham Center District, which is thirty acres, the Chestnut Street Business District, which is thirty-three acres. And in those two districts, multifamily housing is allowed at eighteen units per acre in both the underlying zoning district and in the overlay district. And the multifamily build out for the center business district that provides five hundred and forty units, Chestnut Street Business, five hundred ninety-four units for a total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-four dwelling units. So if the town were to decide that it wanted to revise how it permitted multifamily housing in the overlay district, in both the center business district and in the Chestnut Street Business District, and allow it to be an as of right zoning activity, given the FAR, the density profiles, the setbacks, et cetera, within those, within those two districts, those districts would be compliant with DHCB guidelines. And then there are some remaining districts which also allow housing, multifamily housing by special permit. And that includes the Avery Square Business District and the Hillside Avenue Business District. But in that case, the FAR is not as high as it is in the center business district and chestnut district, business district overlay districts. And I think those districts would need to be examined in terms of their height, massing, lack coverage FAR to see if you could actually attain the eighteen units per acre that the zoning calls for or whether or not these other dimensional items would constrain that full build out. So with that, I'd like to just turn to the zoning analysis that we conducted outside a half a mile of transit. And finally, and so in this case, we, the DHCB guidelines basically allow portions of the district to be located farther away from transit under the proviso that the areas are easily accessible to transit station based upon existing street patterns and pedestrian connections. And so the table on the screen now shows locations where multifamily housing is permitted, either through current zoning or as a forty B development with the parcel size, I think, the acreage and the build out potential shown. And so there's one apartment district that's basically, I think, the Hamlands, which has six acres. And at eighteen units per acre, that's an as of right district that would generate a hundred and eight units. And then we had the three forty Bs that we have in the town, all done at varying densities in terms of units per acre, which potentially if rezoned at the capacity of. the capacity at which they are built out, could potentially be countable toward the minimum standard that D H D has articulated.
So just if I may on the zoning analysis, are we saying that if we use the current zoning that we have, we would comply as it is currently right now? If we are, you know, we go to the commuter district, not the bus district, is that what this is showing us that we could be in compliance?
What it is showing you is that is is a potential to bring it into compliance.
Right.
It's showing it's showing you that you have some components that are currently in compliance. So for example, within a half a mile radius, the apartment district is pretty close to compliance. That's basically eighteen units per acre. The state standard is fifteen. I think one of the problems is that two of those districts kind of fall right below the minimum five acre threshold or at four acres. So maybe you have to slightly enlarge them. In in the center business district and in Chestnut Street Business District, you allow multifamily by special permit. The state is saying it has to be done as of right. So the town would have to decide that it wants to allow that activity by right, not by special permit and changes of zoning accordingly.
Right. So I guess what what I'm getting at is that we we have a blueprint here instead of adding, you know, what's called general residents, which we might, I think, should do something with in the future. But if we use this blueprint and we're able to max it out and change special permit to as of right, there's a lot that we can work with here to get into compliance.
There's a lot of, I think, I just wanted to lay out what the options were, you know, how people want to use this information or implement it, I think, is really a policy decision for you guys.
No, that's fair. Thank you.
And I would just add, Mr. Chair, if I could, to your question, in terms of this, the zoning analysis on the next slide outside of the half mile radius, the under the D H C D draft guidelines, I think that they have quite a bit of discretion to decide whether beyond a half mile of transit will count or won't. So we have some recommendations to that point for as they finalize those recommendations. Because if if we, if D H C D determines that we couldn't utilize the forty Bs and the underlying zoning there, I think it changes the options available to the town.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Lee?
Yes.
Looking at the general, the totality of the areas zone for general residents in Needham, do you know how many acres that is in total?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. But it is certainly a lot more than fifty.
Yes. That's a fair statement.
It would be worth, I think, I think I'm kind of following up on some other. We don't really, we speak of the guidelines, but there's still a draft at the present time and they're likely to be changed in a number of ways. So there's a lot of different, but on the other hand, I think they, my own word that I use is they're likely to turn out to be a framework for something that will have the full force of law later on. So it makes sense to see how we might. And our our current, our current general residence areas, of which we have a substantial amount, and a lot of them are proximate to the train stations, are to family as of right. Based on conforming lots of ten thousand square feet, that comes out to about eight point eight units, units per acre. So if we were thinking of, well, what are our tools in the toolbox for the kinds of things that we could contribute or 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 change that would have the least immediate practical impact, but but get us closer to the to compliance, it would certainly seem that increasing the as of right density, which might be by allowing three families or reducing, say, the the required lot size from eight thousand from ten thousand to eight thousand feet or something, changes like that would make that make this general residence compliant with the draft as it as it exists now. And since some of those those areas which show in yellow on our map are adjacent to some of the undersized apartment areas that you were trying, which are complying but not big enough, it might, it might help you.
Yes, Dan, and I think also, you know, the there's the the district itself has to average the fifteen units per acre. So it can be lower in some areas and higher in others. And we already have a threshold of eighteen units per acre in our underlying zoning. So that, I think, confers some additional flexibility.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting doing any specific thing here now, but just to say that when I look at this in terms of some of the pushback that we've heard from people saying that this is a huge ask of the state. No, it's, at least in our case, it's a lift, but it's it's manageable. And if you say that we're going to accept that there is a regional issue that needs to be addressed in terms of supply and demand of of middle class housing, that it's reasonable for us to be trying to find to find ways of making it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And I I agree with that point. I was going to get at that later when I said, you know, when I first saw this analysis, I was looking for the general residence district to see what could be done there because that makes a lot of sense. Either way, you have, like you said, three families or you allow more units, but then X amount have to be affordable for the incentive. I think we can do a lot with general residents. I think the other issue we're going to have is although we're counting up acreage, let's call it Chestnut Street Business, you know, if those were acre lots, you'd be like, oh, that's great. We can get the density. We have such small lots in that area, as you know, Lee, you know, five thousand, seven thousand square feet. I know one parcel where the business owner wanted to do something and he maxed out on F A R, so he can't do anything there. I just know that there are opportunities there, but we have to decrease what is allowed as far as lot size in order to make it as of right and for someone to do something. Because right now it's good when you do it in totality and say, okay, we have X amount of acres, so we can have X amount of units. But when it comes down to it, those are very small areas and, you know, down on Chestnut Street and as well as Hillside Ave, maybe not as much, but that we really need to see about what the dimensional requirements need to be. And I would support changing those in order to to get up to these numbers. But any further comments? Yes, Mary Ann.
Well, and the last thing that I do note is that this continues to work in concert with the ten percent guideline. So as we add more units of housing, we need, we do need to keep an eye on affordable housing units going forward. So everything is together.
I know we're mid presentation.
Discussion we need.
I know you had some recommendations.
Well, I'll just say on the next slide or maybe two more ahead. And so, you know, this discussion, as from a decision making perspective, in my mind, it's largely how housing policy discussion, but there are fiscal impacts. So just want to call those out. The three programs that are listed in statute are Mass Works Housing Choice and Local Capital Projects Fund. We would not be eligible for these if we're not in compliance with this new legislation. Mass Works is probably, I listed them in order of importance to the town in my mind. So Mass Works, we've utilized its big dollars for public infrastructure, usually around a project that has housing development or job growth. We used it down on First Avenue. Housing Choice Initiative, we spoke at your last meeting about applying for designation, that application is in impending. But we'd like to be able to compete competitively for those funds. And the last bucket we've not utilized, so it's of the least concern. So in terms of timeline, again, there's a lot going on here, but it does lay out kind of the next two years as we know it today. So the most immediate deadline is the end of this month, March thirty-first. Comments are, the comment period closes for D H C D on these draft guidelines. May second is our deadline to comply for twenty twenty-two. This is where you see the satisfying check marks because there are three things that we need to do for compliance. One is this presentation right now. The other is G I S partial maps, which we're up to date with Mass G I S for that already. And the last is really a light lift informational form that we need to fill out. So we're fully on track for compliance in twenty-two. Moving forward, D H C D is saying it will release final guidelines in the summer. In in the draft guidelines, their timeline for coming into full compliance includes another round of interim compliance in twenty twenty-three, which would entail that by the end of this calendar year, we would need to submit an application to them to either say we're ready for full compliance. We're not, so that path isn't available to us. But the alternative is that we would submit basically an action plan. What is our path to full compliance? What's the zoning analysis? What's the community engagement that we're going to do? D H C D is committed to get those plans turned around and back to communities, depending on the type of transit service. So March thirty-first of twenty-three for subway and bus, July first for commuter rail and adjacent. Again, I will flag right now Needham is considered a bus service community. And so full compliance for bus service is the end of calendar year twenty-three. Commuter rail and adjacent communities have until the end of twenty-four. So we'll speak to this also when we flip to the next slide for suggested comments to D H C D. The board received a memo with a draft letter. I would flag that these slides include two changes based on the planning board's discussion of this memo last week. So here's our list of seven points to recommend to you in a comment letter to D H C D on every draft guidelines. The first is around this definition of what type of community are we? We originally were asking for just clarification. The draft guidelines say if you have bus service and no commuter rail, then you're a bus service community. Under that definition, because we have a commuter rail, we believed that we would be disqualified from that and would thus fall to be a commuter rail community. Their D H C D's F A Q said explicitly the opposite. If you have a higher level of transit service, you are then defined by that higher level. And so by having the fifty-nine bus, we would be a bus service community. So there was a conflict there. D H C D issued an updated F A Q and basically said that their intent is to change the draft guidelines to match their F A Q definition, which would reaffirm that we're a bus service community. The planning board's discussion was that we altered the draft letter to say, please maintain your existing definition and define Needham as a commuter rail community. Item two would be irrelevant if we were a commuter rail community, but if we end up being a bus service community, I think the point stands that being a bus, having a bus line in your community would increase our unit capacity from fifteen percent to twenty percent. But because they're only qualifying proximity to a bus station, which is the intersection of two bus lines, we would have an added responsibility because we have a bus route in town, but we wouldn't have an added asset to build out around to achieve these guidelines, if that makes sense. So our request is to say that proximity to transit should include a bus stop, not just bus stations.
Could we also modify that? I'm sorry, to say, given that we also have a commuter rail, could it also include within commuter rail station within a lower service as well as a possible option? It feels like we need to ask, could we put these districts around both in our town? Could that be an option for us?
Okay. I think if we had.
I don't know what the board thinks, but it feels to me like that would be what we'd like.
Right.
Would be for a bus stop to count as an appropriate place, but also for a commuter rail station to count as an appropriate place. We would like both to count for us.
Yes, and commuter rail stations do count.
They do count.
Yes, sorry. Thank you for that clarification. Yes. So.
So it's in there.
Yep, that's in there.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, exactly. Yes. Thank you for that clarification. Item number three is in addition from the planning board's discussion. Again, this is around providing us with more flexibility. The request is to not have the twenty twenty-five of the fifty acres be contiguous. I think the, and Lee can chime in if I get this wrong, but the discussion was Needham, like so many other communities, because we do have four transit stops, we really could use that flexibility to build out around each stop that might not be contiguous, but is very much in the spirit of the of the requirement. But it would just give us more tools. Item four on the next slide is getting at this concern around D H C D having discretion once you go outside of the half mile of transit. Because we have been proactive about building out those forty Bs, our request really is for them to explicitly state in the guidelines that we could use the underlying zoning for those developments to count towards this compliance regardless of its proximity to transit. Item five, the D H C D guidelines, they added a sentence that said in the future, D H C D has the discretion to decide additional funding sources that could be on the line for noncompliant communities. And so the request is for them to adhere to the legislative intent and just the three listed in the statute. Item six is a process concern in the guidelines. D H C D says that they will be available to communities to be kind of advisory or maybe answer some questions as we're forming our, any changes to our underlying zoning, but that they absolutely would not certify compliance until after town meeting votes. I think this could set communities up, including Needham, for a very challenging process. If we think that we have something to go to town meeting that's compliant, get an affirmative vote and then subsequently find out that something was wrong or not compliant. And number seven is the timing. If we don't get our action plan back from D H C D until the end of March of twenty-three, that's a, we would have missed spring twenty-three of town meeting for sure. And even fall of twenty-three, I think, would be tight if, depending on what the community and planning process would be. So that is a lot, but that is the overview. And our recommendations to the board are approval of an updated draft letter to D H C D approval for us to move forward with compliance in twenty-two. And then we would turn it over to planning, community development staff and housing working group to think through what does full compliance potentially look like.
Great, Kay. Thank you for all that information. Thank you, Lee, as well. Just a question on process. And I'm thinking now of a public hearing as we move forward and possibly a joint public hearing with the planning board. When would you suggest it would be ripe for that? I looked at your timeline. I was trying to figure out, you know, when we get some ideas back from the public or would we wait? I know the housing group is also working on something as well. But we are heavily involved in this. I know it's a zoning issue, but we're clearly heavily involved in this as well. So you don't have to answer tonight, but I think we should just mark a time. We should have a joint public hearing and get the comments from the public because it will clearly affect or could affect their property. Other than that, you have suggested comments for the guidelines. I think they're all appropriate and that's what we're being asked to vote on tonight. So I'll open up the discussion to the board on those comments. And yes, Marcus.
Thank you, Katie, and everyone else that worked on this to get this all together. I'm going back to number four about the existing forty B units, kind of continue or along the committees, the communities to count the existing units, you know, as we're looking to increase that ten percent and allow for greater units, would it? If we continue to count those, would that make it tougher for us to kind of increase that density going forward? As in, if we don't have that in there and we kind of bring up the standard and we kind of get ahead of that or the possibility of having more affordable housing and increasing that ten percent threshold, would that be a better thing?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, I think the goal of number four is to say, if you think, for example, about Modera, which is more than a half mile from public transit, if if we amended the underlying zoning for those parcels to achieve compliance with these requirements, that that could count towards our minimum unit capacity under the requirements. In practically speaking, there would be no development because it's fully built out already. But we could have it as an option or lever to achieve this goal. I think the question of how do we keep up with the ten percent forty B requirement is a more holistic one beyond item four. And I think it would be paired with the ongoing discussions about affordability requirements generally in town and and policies around inclusionary zoning.
Any further?
Yeah, you can make a pitch that Modera is, I mean, across from Bird St., Bird Street, up to Meadow. But at the edge, I mean, that's right. But at the edge, I mean, that's right, Harrison, right? But we also did, just, it's just over, right? But they said if there was an easy access, that's pretty easy access. But that Moderna also was built with a lot of one room, one bedroom units. Potentially to get through for, so it wouldn't overwhelm the schools.
Yeah, and I think the nuance is that we would be changing the underlying zoning and determining how many units would be possible under that underlying zoning, regardless of what is existing there today.
Okay.
So it's a little counterintuitive, but.
Okay.
Further thoughts?
Yes. One is that I think the letter is a good thing because the more, getting some clarification, one of the issues in this is that some of the stuff that was written at the state level creates some ambiguities that we're just all better off having resolved. And also has some kind of unrealistic assumptions like the type. There's language in, in the guidelines that says they want us to really involve people and have a robust community participation process to decide what areas are going to be rezoned and how that's going to be done. With our, our system of public hearings, notices, planning board drafts, town meeting schedule and so on, it just doesn't work in the, in the, in the window that they've, that they've asked us to do it in. So getting a longer time, timeframe plus effect, it isn't a final reg yet and it's going to be changed somehow. I think ultimately the town's goal is to comply with the regs as long as they come out in a reasonable form. And they probably will be reasonable, but they'll be different than what we're looking at now. So I think you had to be flexible in the way that you prepare for it. Another piece has to do with, I get, and, and you may have to do the analysis of this in a certain way because of the way this, this stuff is written. But sometimes it can be distilled in a more similar, simpler form for discussion with laypeople. For example, they're talking about the two standards of the minimum of fifty acres and the total number that a town would have to do. Well, a fifty acre minimum really only would apply to a community that has at the absolute minimum, if it's anywhere in the M B T area, even a, a town that with no service, wouldn't apply to any town with more than seven thousand five hundred housing units right now. So therefore that kind of gets set aside because we're a little north of eleven thousand housing units. So we, they say, okay, this is an eleven thousand unit town. How many acres do you have to comply? And depending on whether we're a bus community or a rail community, which I think is a good point to try to resolve, it's in the nature of we had to have a hundred and fifty acres of compliant zoning. So once you say that, then you start saying, how are we going to deal with this? Given this map with the areas that are in, with, with what, what certain areas are zoned for? And maybe in a little way, coming back to one of Marcus's questions, well, are we gaining some advantage by including the Modera site in the, in, in the, in the counted area in the, in terms of the town being in compliance? Even though it would not build any additional housing, and I guess the answer is yes. But that's only six of the hundred and fifty acres that we've got to make, that we've got to make work. So that over time, if you comply, you're going to be creating conditions which will allow for some additional market level affordable, you know, multifamily housing to be constructed in the, in, in the, in the range of the, of the, of the stations. But I think you can kind of distill the analysis down a little bit. So it's a two part thing. You're trying to make a simpler case and you had to keep an eye on what the state is doing because it will, I'm almost certain that it's going to be different by the time they say, here's the rule.
Great, thank you, Mr. Matthews, Ms. Cool.
So I also support having the town manager send a letter on our behalf with the objection, concerns that we've raised here. Objections is not the right word, but so that we can get clarity on that. And while I do think it's important to have a hearing, I actually think it's important to get clarity on the rules first before we do that. And I also think we need to get clarity from the state on whether the existing forty Bs would be considered in or out. Because I, the, the question with the existing forty Bs can drastically change, I think, the number of acres that we need to have. So you're right, the hundred and fifty acres is if it's fifteen units per acre, that's where it comes out. If you're looking at, you know, these five acres with seventy six units per acre on them, that has an impact in the overall number. So understanding what our situation really is will be critical.
Yeah, and if I could just, I would agree. I wouldn't want to have a, we could have a hearing on anything that the public wants to talk about. But in terms of our leadership, talking to the community about what we think this means and where we think it's going to go, I think we had to wait until there's a final state regulation and then get some staff input about here are a couple of two or three configurations of how, how the town might respond to this and, and, and be in compliance. Then you could have a, then you could have a hearing.
And that's fine, and that's why I asked, we're in the timeline and we'll get where that fits in to make it. But yeah, we need clarification on, on these issues and then we can hear from the public, yes.
Yeah, would it, would it be too much of a lift of being proactive and having just different scenarios ready to go? Like in case we weren't to have to keep it the way it is and then with the changes? Is, is, I assume that's a lot to do, but just so we're ready to go either way is what I was thinking.
I'm sorry.
Before it's final.
I think before public hearing, but once we get the feedback, you know, knowing if changes are going to be made or not. But before we get that feedback, is it okay to kind of just know as far as what we're going to do? I don't know if that makes sense, to know what we're going to do prior to have just different A, B, C scenarios ready to go? If we were to have to abide by this or if we were able to have the amendments made that we asked for?
Is that what the housing working group is going to look at?
That's one of the recommendations, I see.
So I, I, I guess I'll comment and then actually ask Lee to chime in as well, just on the housing working group. I think as staff, we're certainly brainstorming options available to us. And in the addition to the housing working group work plan, I wouldn't put forward in the public option A, B, or C until those roles are final. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that, just because really the foundation could change under us and.
That's what I said before, public, yes.
So I'll just see, Lee, if you have anything to add on the working group.
No, I don't think so. I think the working group is, is looking at these guidelines and is going to be looking at strategies that actually move us in this direction of creating additional housing, but certainly with an eye toward the fact that these, these guidelines are really a work in progress and will probably be changing over time.
Thank you, Lee. Kevin, did you?
Yeah, I love the letter idea. I think we make a pitch that the calendar, it basically is leans on once final regulations promulgated or issue finalized, then a calendar would kick in place rather than specific dates. I know we talked about moving it back. In fact, December thirty first, twenty twenty four, but why don't we just, why don't we make a pitch it? Like we could do all this stuff, but let's wait till you guys get something. Because this is a lot of work that has some towns do for something that they haven't settled on.
Yeah. So are you suggesting that we would say, once the final regs are promulgated, that we then need a year and a half for something like that? Before a deadline or what, something reasonable there?
Does that make sense?
Rather than giving them twenty twenty four as a deadline? I think that could be a thoughtful thing to do.
I'm trying to think what the timeline is now between summer of two and a half. So summer of twenty two and we're asking December of twenty four.
Four, yeah.
That's eighteen months.
That's two years, it's two years and four months, so. Yes, exactly, exactly. So what, whatever reasonable period is, I think we should figure that out.
Right.
And I think we can give authority to the town manager. If you can think about that, I think the suggestion's been made. I think the idea is we are in the town meeting form of government and unlike cities, which I had a discussion the other day, how we can't be as flexible with timing. So whatever works for the town and staff, I think that's a good comment. Thanks, Kevin. Is there a motion that the board vote to approve the town manager to submit a letter on the town's behalf commenting on the D H C D draft guidelines by March thirty first, twenty twenty two? And submit the necessary paperwork for twenty twenty two compliance by May second, twenty twenty two? And I think it should say authorize the town manager. Is there such a motion? So.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you, thanks for walking us through that. It's a lot of work.
Thanks, Lee, Karen.
One of many meetings.
Distilling it so that it was a lot easier to understand.
Yes. Great. Next item on the agenda, police department report. Chief Schlitter, Lieutenant Baker, nice to see you. Deputy Chief Baker. I think it was all the, we have Dan Matthews' final night here meeting. We had, that's why we're a little behind and I was thinking of the past, I guess, so.
It's that COVID virus that got in the way.
He's got a lot of.
Nice to see both of you and of course, thank you for all of your hard work. You're here to present a report we have in our packet and I will turn it over to you, chief.
Great, thank you so much. First off, Dan, I just want to say thank you and congratulations for all your hard work. I remember when I got hired here in ninety eight, you were here. So your commitment to the town is, is been amazing and, and for your, I'm grateful for your support over the years and you definitely left the town in a better place, so.
You too, chief.
Thank you very much. So this is a draft, it's kind of a working draft that, you know, we've been working on for a little bit. So what I think maybe we'll do is we'll kind of go through each section briefly. And if you want to have, you know, if you have concerns, if you want to state them at that point or wait to the end, that's fine as well.
Yeah, you can state them during. Can I go back? Yes.
So first we'll take a look quickly at the, the police department, kind of break down how our department is structured. This is myself and then we have the deputy chief and the lieutenants. So the deputy Baker is in charge of community service professional development division. And then we have investigative services and professional standard divisions, which is overseen by Lieutenant Matt Forbes. And that really, they cover court services, school resource officers, drug and alcohol testing, warrant management, regional intelligence and metro lag. Traffic and community safety division, which is overseen by Lieutenant Belinda Carroll. This division is responsible for traffic enforcement, school safety, parking enforcement, grant management, domestic violence action committee, hiring process and human rights. And then parole patrol operations, which is our biggest division, is overseen by Lieutenant John McGrath. So he's really responsible for the entire patrol operations dispatch, animal control, special event management, mountain bike operations, emergency manag- management, honor guard and major road projects. I put in a brief statement about this report and, you know, how important it is for us to provide feedback to the community. It's, this is something that we, myself and Deputy Chief Baker talked about several years ago when we had seen Brookline's town report. And then when COVID, you know, struck and obviously the social justice movement, this is something that we had already been talking about and we, we kind of set into motion. So the year end crime review, this is group A and group B. So when it breaks down, you look at the, from the three years and obviously with, with COVID that these numbers are a little bit, they're, they're not as normal as they would be because our whole patrol operations and the way of life as we're used to kind of ceased to exist. So some of these numbers might, you might see a decrease, but it's really in, in terms of the situation and the environment and the climate that we were in. In two thousand twenty one, they had five hundred fifty four group A offenses. As you can say, this is down fifty seven percent from two thousand twenty overall. As you can see, that note regarding unemployment fraud in two thousand twenty, there was, I think there was almost six hundred of them. So that kind of, you know, strays on the, the percentages for that year. So that's why it looks like it's such a big drop. And it's up eight point eight four percent from two thousand nineteen. Two thousand twenty one Needham had two hundred and twelve group B offenses. This is down twenty eight percent from two thousand twenty and forty three percent from two thousand nineteen. And that lists, and I know there's an addendum on the back that kind of spells out the different groups.
Chief, does this tell you any type of story? I know it's tough, like you said with COVID, but are you seeing some, you know, areas that are impacted with the numbers versus others or any specific trends on, on A or B? Well, even to, to, to date, forget the, you know, the current data maybe here, the twenty one, but just in the field.
You know, we did these simple assaults, which you see that are, you know, some of them that in general might be down that were outside the family unit domestics. We have seen issues with family issues increasing, especially over COVID. Mental health is something that we're seeing and, and crimes related to that has had a dramatic increase in mental health overall. Thank you. You know, a lot of your theft crimes are, are down and some of your liquor offenses down because the bars weren't open or liquor stores were closed for a while and buildings were closed and so that type of stuff. So it does, it did impact some of those.
Yes, thank you.
So assault offenses, there were seventy total assault offenses committed in sixty three cases in two thousand twenty one. The total number of assaults is up by one from two thousand twenty. There were sixteen aggravated assaults offenses in nine cases in two thousand twenty one. Of those nine cases, four resulted in arrests and the other five resulted in suspect being summoned to court. So the difference between the arrest and summons to court, obviously it's a physical arrest where you'd be taken to the station and brought to court. The summons is your, it's a criminal application that's applied for by the officers. And then they're given a, a date to show up to face those charges. So there were seventeen intimidation charges in seventeen cases in two thousand twenty one. Seven of these resulted in suspect being arrested. Two resulted in a suspect being summoned and eight incidents had a report taken with no further action. Burglary, breaking and entering, twenty three incidents in two thousand twenty one. This is up from a total of eleven burglary, breaking and entering offenses two thousand twenty. Of the twenty three incidents, one resulted in an arrest, five resulted in a summons, eight required no further action and nine were forwarded detective for further investigation. A lot of these times that if we get physical evidence, whether it be DNA fingerprint information, those may take, you know, six months to a year to get the results back from the state lab.
Yes, probably more for Miles. Is there a way to put this up on the screen so they can see the presentation, the people that are watching? Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was, is in the packet. I didn't know if it was in. Okay, okay.
Destruction, damage, vandalism of property, sixty five vandalism. Four of those were arrests, summons and then reports taken thirty four under investigation, seven. So there were sixty five vandalism instructions, but in fifty eight cases, so that might have been multiple issues of vandalism at different locations, but it's the same, same report, the same incident. Larceny theft offenses, hundred and fifty larceny offenses in a hundred and one cases. Fraud, two hundred fourteen fraud cases, drug narc- narcotic charges. There were thirteen cases with drug offenses in two thousand twenty one. Six were arrests, seven were summons. Group B offenses, as you go down, you can see disorderly conduct was down. Do you operating under influence of alcohol or drugs? Those numbers are down and that's obviously self-explanatory with everything that was going on. Family offenses, nonviolent. Liquor law violations, it was actually up from twenty but down from nineteen. Trespass in the property, that's down, all others were down. And that kind of goes and explains, you know, of those, what those incidents involved. Mental health, in two thousand twenty one, there were two hundred and seven calls that were deemed mental health related for this data. We are considering a mental health rated call to an incident which mental health is involved. There was an average of seventeen mental health rated calls per month. The highest number was in March, the lowest number The highest number was in March, the lowest number was thirteen in August and September. There were a hundred and seventy-six total mental health really calls in two thousand twenty, meaning that there was an eighteen percent increase in the number of calls in two thousand twenty-one. Obviously with the nature of mental health, calls can vary greatly. Sometimes the end with the individual being taken to hospital for treatment. This transport can be the patient's request or agreement voluntary or under a section twelve, which is gives us the, we can sign that pink slip. It's a section twelve that allows us to take them to a location to be evaluated and then the hospital can keep them up for a period of time. And in these cases, the biggest thing is to make sure, even if they do commit a crime, and that's a lot of times we see with mental health related crimes that they're summoned because we want to get them to a treatment facility to make sure they get the proper care. And then we'll, we'll take care of the rest after that. So this, if you could see, it goes down, section twelve, which was initiated by police. We had fifty-two of them, it's twenty-five percent. Then by a doctor, a therapist is twenty-nine. Voluntary, which a lot of times we, we go the voluntary route because it might not fully meet the criteria of us to sign that section twelve, but we do feel that they're in some type of crisis. And the best case scenario for them is to be taken to a hospital to be evaluated and we work with them to get them to, to go with us on a voluntary basis. Court order, we had one and then no transport was eighty-eight. So that could be for a variety of reasons that there may be somebody that is there with them, that is familiar with them, that understands the care that they need and the family member's been having touch with, you know, a mental health professional or their doctor and they feel comfortable enough that they can handle it on their own at that point. Drug overdoses.
How many of these might have been repeat situations or people that have, have done these multiple times within the fifty-two or the, the twenty-nine? Was that consistent or were they all different people that went through this?
I'm sure that there are probably some repeat individuals that are in there.
And has anything done more for those ones that continue to come back or we initiate or is that done differently? How's that handled?
So we do, so we have the community outreach program, our CIT program, and they do follow-ups with, with those. And the whole idea is to meet with them, meet with their family, meet with their, their social workers, whatever, be part of the piece of this solution for them. Because we want to make sure that when we're going there, that if they're, we want to get them into a place before they get into crisis. So we work with this, the community and I know Deputy Baker can talk about the CCIT, but in our follow-up, so we make sure that we go down, we talk to them. What do they need? What are some of the issues that might be triggering to this? What can we do to help with that? And make sure that they don't get into crisis and get them the resources that they need. But we do have a pretty extensive follow-up program that we work with, with, you know, Riverside and our community partners, collaborative partners to make sure that we're working all phases of, of whatever the issue might be.
Thank you, Chief.
In two thousand twenty-one, there's seventeen suspected drug overdoses in Needham. Eight of those were opiate overdoses, nine of those were overdoses from another drug. This is an increase of overdoses from two thousand twenty, which had twelve total overdoses. Of the seventeen overdoses, eight of them had Narcan administered by either police or the fire. Nine of the seventeen overdoses did not require use of the Narcan. There were three overdoses that led to deaths and one with an unknown result. And in, in the incident with the unknown part of the party was unresponsive at the time that they were taken to hospital. And we necessarily can't get that medical information from the hospital to determine the outcome of that. Domestic, in two thousand twenty-one, the ninety, ninety-seven domestic, domestic violence related calls in Needham. Sixty-six out of ninety-seven or sixty-eight percent of these calls were verbal only in nature and did not escalate in any form of physical violence. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight percent of the calls had offensive assault battery attached to them and for the domestic related calls reported threats, intimidation and two reported strangulations. Eighty of the domestic related calls were reported this year had no injuries, fifteen had minor injuries and two had moderate inju- injuries associated with the incidents. In eighty-two or ninety-seven, eighty-two out of the ninety-seven incidents, no current restraining order, protection order in place and and the victim chose to decline getting emergency order and put into place at that time. In eight instances, the victim did elect to go to emergency order in place. In six of those cases, there was already an active restraining order, abuse prevention order in place at the time. In one case, a new emergency order was denied by a judge. So we do have follow-ups with domestic violence as well. So that we try and connect with that person after the fact to make sure that they're in a a safe place or if they need any assistance from us, if there's anybody, any resources that we can assist with them getting. Use of force. Use of force incidents that needed police are involved in are a result of individuals' level of unlawful compliance resistance around the officer looking to harm the public. We are obligated morally by law and by policy to use only a level of force that is reasonable and necessary to effect an arrest, to ensure public safety or to protect ourselves or others from harm. In two thousand twenty-one, there were nineteen times in which force was used during a call for service. In some calls, multiple types of force was necessary to resolve the situation and maintain the safety of all present. So hands-on control, as you could see, is the majority of, of, you know, what we do for use of force. And so that might be, that might be, that might be as simple as taking somebody and moving them to another location or forcing them to a location, handcuffing them to get them into a place that we can handcuff them if it's under arrest, but a lot of, yeah, so it's hands-on control, so it's not, there's no, it's not striking, it's not, it's more compliance. So we might take them by the wrist to, to effect an arrest, but if we struggle them a little bit when it's just hand controls, then, then a lot of towns, I'm not sure, actually relate this to a use of force, but anytime that we do put our hands on somebody, that we do write a use of force report. Okay. So this is the lowest level of force and it's really just in compliance to make sure that everybody's safe and we get the situation resolved. The tasers displayed, so anytime that you remove your taser, that, that's a use of force. That wasn't pointed, it was just unholstered. Firearms unholstered, there was two instances. And in one instance, we had the less lethal ready. So so the less lethal is a, it's a, so we have a couple of them now. So we have a beanbag shotgun, which is a less lethal. And then we have bolo wrap, which is, is almost like a taser-like device, but what it does is it shoots out wire and it wraps around them. And what it does is it not only confuses them, but it limits their ability. So if somebody's holding a knife or somebody's acting assault, if you can use this thing to wrap them up, to kind of take them off their mark and then we can move in and take them under control without having to use any higher level of force.
And which one was used? It just says one. Was it the beanbag or was it the bolo?
It was the forty millimeter round. So I'm the forty millimeter, which is, it's an impact round. So it's almost like a it's almost like a racquetball. And it, it's, it's a, it's an impact round. It's almost like a beanbag gun. So there's certain areas where you can, you can, depending on the level of force. So depending on the level of force that's needed. But they, we do get training on where to, where you want to hit them in less vital areas. You wouldn't be here, the face, the neck. But if you were in a lethal situation where you could use deadly force and you use the impact round, you're just shooting for kind of the center mass to just, you want to stop the threat. So the, the, we've been very fortunate that we do have a lot of, of these less lethal options available to us. And the training, it's important. So we're very grateful for that as well.
Were any officers harmed in any of these instances, you know?
So they're probably, you know, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but yeah, there would be some that. There is, yeah.
Thank you.
Is that something we can add to the stats as far as officer harm or safety or something else? We can just understand the gravity of, you know, what the officers are going through as well to understand why this is happening.
I think we can, we can, we can definitely do that. And I think there's later, there's, it talks about especially in handcuffing, I think there's a talks about officer safety or mental health. It kind of breaks it down that way. So we can probably, we can do that. So this is the, the number of encounters in which force was used. So it breaks it down by race. Black, there was three, Hispanic one, white fifteen for a total of nineteen. And then we go into motor vehicle stops and race and gender. And that breaks it down by the total number of motor vehicle stops. And then the next section actually breaks it, breaks it down by motor vehicle stops or race, gender and residence. So if you, you look at total by race, the number of motor vehicle stops. And that includes, so this will include everything about written, civil citation, a written warning and a verbal warning. Under the hands free bill, they talk about civil citations and written warning documenting. We're one of the few departments that have for a long time recorded data on verbal warnings. So that we get a better idea of the total population of motor vehicle stops rather than relying on citation data. So if you break it down by race, seven point five percent for, for black, Hispanic is eight point five, Asian is five point zero, Middle Eastern two point seven, Indian point five percent and white seventy, five point eight. And then when you go to residents, it's point four percent of black, point three percent Hispanic, point eight percent of Asian, Middle Eastern point three, and then Indian point one. And then white is thirteen point four. Then the next obviously talks about non-residents.
Then I just had a question about non-residents. Of those non-residents, how many of them work in Needham or?
We don't track that. We wouldn't have any way of knowing that unless we act. We, we, we would ask them that. And it also for conducting, you know, collecting race data for motor vehicle stops. It's not on their license and if we don't ask that data either. So if the officer's unsure, we'll put unsure. But it wouldn't, it's not something they were asked, do you work in town? Because then it kind of sets off another thing like you're asking me, I work in town.
Does that make a difference?
Yeah, yeah, you know what I mean? I think it does. So we don't, it's hard to, I don't think we could break that out.
And then the other question I have as far as no force, no enforcement and verbal warning, are those kind of the same thing because or is that two different things? I know they're two different statistics.
On the bottom.
Yeah, on the bottom for gender.
Okay.
No enforcement is more, I think from crashes.
Say it again.
I think it's from crashes.
Crashes?
They were involved in a crash, but there was no citation or, or any action taken.
Okay.
And the verbal warnings are, are collected in the total number of, of stops, motor vehicle stops?
Is there a way? Yeah, I was gonna, just to kind of say what that is for people, you know, no enforcement, you know, means this or that. Verbal warnings, it's just basically, you know, don't let this happen again, which I understand. But I mean, for people that are looking at this, when you just see a no enforcement or criminal application, what does that mean exactly? Are they, what happens?
Okay.
Just, I think just a further breakdown, yeah, definition or like even a glossary or word bank or something at the end, so people understand what, what this means.
That makes sense. Thanks for doing this, but one question I have is could you provide some data about the catch area, like Norfolk County, where's, what do we racially, what's Needham by racial breakdown? If you could include those numbers, then give context, understanding what's going on in your motor vehicle stops. And if not, also Needham, but would Norfolk County or Middlesex County provide some clarity? Just so you understand like that, you know, is there tracking going on? And it doesn't appear to be, but it would help to give just some context.
So you, you, you want to get information from Norfolk County in terms of stop number?
No, 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 just too much. No, sort of racial breakdown.
We'll talk more about that. I think there's some.
It's, it's a, it's extremely, it's extremely complicated and difficult because it's hard to take into context. Because we're, it's a big commuter location Needham because of the highway. You've got the Mass Pike, you've got Route nine, one thirty-five. It's, you, you can't take into, into effect what the working population is in town or the commuters coming through.
Right.
Through towns. So it's, yeah, there are ways we can look at some benchmarks, but I don't think it, it necessarily tells the whole picture in terms of, of numbers and stats. But it is something we're working on to try and find.
Cause I looked up numbers in Norfolk County and it provides some context to say, okay, you know, this is, you're not completely, it seems like you are working in the median.
Right. And I, I will say in, in, since we've been, you know, I've been chief, looking at the numbers, they've stayed consistent in terms of the percentage. So it's not, you know, it's always been around that seven to eight percent, maybe a little bit over back and forth, but it in all those, those numbers have been, you know, relatively steady through, through the course of the years, so.
Back to this question with the chart at the bottom. So just, I was also had the same question. What do these actually mean? So where it says, for example, there's a civil fine and there's a criminal application, what do those things actually mean? So somebody, does a civil fine mean?
Is speeding, it's a money fine.
It's a money.
Money fine. And a, and a, and a criminal application is that there was a a, a crime associated, you know, whether it be OUI or suspended license operating. A lot, the lot that we see are unregistered, uninsured and unlicensed with the criminal applications. Sometimes depending on a suspension, it depends on what it's for. If it's somebody that's a habitual traffic offender who's been operating with suspended license and has been stopped and charged numerous times, they're most likely going to be arrested. Because we face that picture again, that if we stop somebody with suspended license and we let them go, we only charge them and don't arrest them and they've been operating fifteen times and charged with it and they do something the next day, they're going to come back on us. And so that's why we kind of forced into a lot of situations where we do have to make an arrest based on the person's history.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
And I saw, I just wanted to go back real quick. I blinked, but I'm looking at the handcuffing and the stats that we're doing for stops and things like that. Are we able to get the same kind of stops with race, gender and all those things for handcuffing as well? That's just back a page. After you talk about drug overdoses and.
Did I go over handcuffing?
I think you.
If we could get a racial.
I don't know if we went over handcuffing or missed it. Just to have the same kind of.
We do have that. I think it's at the back.
Okay.
Oh, no, no.
No, we don't.
No, I think we can get it.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's in here.
Okay. Yeah, we can get that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Majority of the, obviously when you look at the, the handcuffing, it breaks it down, but a majority of them are, I want to say it to say eighty percent or something, because of arrests. So when someone's arrested, it's, so you're going to get it twice for the fact that we break it down by arrest. And then if you break it down by handcuffing alone.
Yeah.
When we go on and talk about handcuffing later, we'll say officer safety or for mental health for that person. You have two officer safety, five mental health only. You know, and that's, you know, that usually when that happens, they're trying to harm themselves or harm others.
Officer safety only means that they're posing a threat.
Correct. I think, you know, when I looked at the cases, one was a domestic that we went down to. And the individual was acting very agitated and aggressive. And he kept saying to the officer, arrest me, arrest me. And he kept coming towards the officer. And so the officer not sure what was going on that time, knowing that there was a domestic handcuffed him for, for his safety. And that's why that would come up.
Thank you.
Arrests, there were total sixty-one arrests and this number's down. Arrests, uh, there are total sixty-one arrests, um, and this number's down eleven, uh, point five percent. From a total of sixty-nine arrests in, in two thousand twenty, partially, obviously the pandemic and the other reason would be. We didn't have a lockup facility and we're using Wellesley, so we tried to limit as much as we can. And if you look at the breakdown of arrests, you'll see that most of the arrests were, um, mostly mandated. Um, shall arrest or preferred response, um, or there was something, um, it was more likely a felony or more dangerous situation.
John, if I'm understanding properly, of this sixty-one, eighteen of these arrests were for traffic stops. And then it gets back to, there was probably some reason why you had to make the arrest based on a prior.
Lot of those are, might be like OUIs are fated to stop for police, meaning that they, they took off on the police and there was a. Some sort of pursuit or something of that nature.
Okay.
Um, so we'll go into, um, those arrests of the race. There was, uh, white forty. Black, uh, were nine, Hispanic eight, Asian four, total sixty-one. Fifty-two to sixty-one arrests were, were males. The breakdown of arrests by race is shown above. The majority of the arrests in two thousand twenty-one, sixty-five point five percent were white suspects. Nine arrests African American, which equals fourteen percent. We did that. Spoke about that. There were twenty-one arrests and involved in BIPOC individuals, twenty of those, twenty-one arrests were. Offenses that mandate arrest or preferred response. Eight of those arrests involved active warrants. Which, when there is a warrant, the law indicates they shall be arrested, so that doesn't provide any, um, real leeway in that. Seven arrests were first assault and battery on a family member. One arrest was for assault to murder. One involved possession with intent to distribute class A and class B drugs and trafficking fentanyl. One involved felony possession of a firearm, one involved assault and battery with a dangerous weapon. Um, the arrest was not mandatory prefer involved the suspect in ongoing heroin, fentanyl distribution investigation. So that party might have had a, a motor vehicle or a license issue, but, um, there was. They were a subject of a, a fentanyl distribution, um, so the arrest was made based on the information we had.
And then can we get a breakdown of the, the white arrests as well?
We do, I do, we do have them and I, I went through those as well. It's not in here, but we have a sheet, but we can do that. Um, and most of those, you know, I just looked at them, were same nature, mandatory domestics, violation restraining order and so forth.
Just understanding that.
Yep. Um, so the total calls and types, total calls for service, um. As you could see, um, we had, I mean, police were at forty-two thousand three hundred sixty-five calls for service in two thousand twenty-one. This is down thirty-seven hundred or eight four point four five percent from the two thousand twenty total. Calls can be broken down into priorities based on the level of urgency. The highest priority is level one. Includes burglary alarms, fires, motor vehicle crashes with injury and sudden deaths. Priority two indicates calls for suspicious activity, fraud, last any wellbeing checks. And then priority three is the lowest, which is encompasses the majority of, um, everyday calls. Include security checks, animal calls, public assistance, motor vehicle stops and, and administrative costs. So traffic in community safety division updates. So this kind of breaks down the motor vehicle, um, stops. Written warning, it goes into, as you could see, um, between, um, you know, written warning and verbals. You know, we, we like to make sure that, you know, I've said this to game many times when I talk to people about the new officers coming on about. When they pull over people and, you know, the impact that they might have of getting a money fine and, you know, not everybody has a job where they could take a day off. With, with pay, um, and the impact that might have in their insurance and that. People do deserve, you know, a break and so forth. And just I ask them to, to remember, uh, that, which I. Yeah.
If they were young ones too.
Yeah, exactly. Um, most of the violations were written warnings, um, it kind of breaks down there, so. The most, the most written violation was hand, for hands-free violation, it's texting while driving. Um, the law surrounds violations, it's found as a thing, it's five hundred fifty-four hand-free violations, which is twenty-two percent of all. Violations in two thousand twenty-one. There was four hundred seventy-seven warnings, sixty-five civil citations and three criminal citations. Uh, the criminal citations probably as a result of pulling over for that, they might have had uninsured, unregistered or unlicensed or suspended. So that's how that, uh, probably came about. Um, it kind of goes into their accidents. Um, three hundred and seventy motor vehicle accidents. This is, this is up twenty-nine point four percent from the total of accident two thousand twenty. The number is still significantly less than the number of accidents, uh, was occurring pre-brand, pre-pandemic. Two thousand sixteen to nineteen, the town of Needham was averaging four hundred fifty-seven accidents per year. And you'd like to say that officer by eighties and our other traffic officers, um, influence and. Going to high impact areas in terms of crashes and, and violations and complaints. Definitely has an impact and, uh, on that number of crashes and safe enforcement.
And this chart is different than the one earlier that had the motor vehicle stops. It's the same type of violation types.
Yep.
But it's completely different. Can we get the same breakdown for this as well?
It's, it's all from that.
Okay, so that's what I was just. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
They're withdrawn from the total from this one over here. Okay.
The, um, one thing that, um, you have to take into account for, for, uh, that is. This chart is showing violations based on citations, um. So, so you can see there's verbal warning on a citation, right? That doesn't make sense. So what that's telling me without specifically looking at it is that someone received a hands-free, um. Citation, say a civil fine and, but they received a verbal warning for something else on the same ticket. So, yeah, so that's why the numbers don't, that's why the numbers, and so. The total number is, um, of violations is different than the total number of citations. And the, and the total number of stops. So it's like, you're kind of comparing. Uh, a number of different things, yeah.
All right, so you have an OUI, you might have five or six charities or.
Right.
Five offenses listed. The communities, um.
On Friday at four.
Yeah, right. Obviously, community safety officer, I can touch briefly on that. Um, I think the, the biggest thing. Um, with Officer Sculp and Eddie, she just took over just recently. Um, she really. Does an unbelievable job with, with the crossing guards, traffic supervisors, the sixteen of them, who cover sixty-two school crossings a day. Um, which is quite a task in itself. But I will say her work with our, our seniors and, and, uh, the housing authority and so forth has been unbelievable. She does crafts with a cop and organize the coffee with a cop and, um, some of the stuff she does is really, is, is really good. And she's really got a niche up there, so, um, she does, she does great work. Then she, so in, in two thousand twenty-one, she entered the police department in a third annual, she loves police gingerbread house contest. So there was four, forty-one entries from forty-one states, um. So we, she made a, she made a gingerbread house of the new police station. Um, yeah, it was great. It didn't last long. But, so she, she won the, um, rookie award trophy, so that was great. Um, so patrol, patrol oper- operations, emergency manhood division, um. You know, patrol represents the majority of the police department, which we, we just spoke about. Um, they're the ones that are out there every day, the ones you see in the car. Um, and I think, I think we're all pretty versed on what, what their duties are. And then dispatch, obviously that's the kind of the, the heartbeat of the department. Because everything comes in through our dispatch and we, we will ring down to fire department for some medicals. And then they dispatch, um, all calls to all of our officers out on the road. Mountain bike unit, obviously we're pretty. Aware of what they do. Animal control, um, has been. Uh, a challenge this year, um. Our main animal control officer has been injured from a, an incident that involved him breaking up, um, a fight between two dogs. So, so, um, but Officer Palmer, who is a certified animal control officer too, has been picking up. As much as he can to make sure that we're staying on track. And then a school resource officers, um, I know we've talked a lot about what our school, our, our resource officers do. Um, I don't wanna.
John, can I just ask one of the, uh, the animal issues? My perception is that they're increasing. But this was an area where we didn't have sort of comparative data. It would have been nice to know kind of what the incidents were in the prior year. I don't think you need to go back and give it to us, but as you think of it next year, if you could still give us kind of a baseline to have a sense.
Sure.
It, it does seem like post-COVID, there's been a lot.
No, there has.
Going on.
Yeah, there's been a lot of issues from unleashed to picking up waste and.
Yeah.
Yes, fields and so forth. So there definitely been an increase.
That's kind of, what's a non-dog related call?
The cats. Yeah, could be a lot of different things.
Yeah. Right. I do want to say, and I'll say it, the school resource officer, you know, I have two children right now, two kids in high school and it's just been, you know, remarkable. Um, the communication, the connection, the information, uh, for them and their peer groups. I just think it's terrific. I know we've gone over it quite a bit and clear off so rockets, the most popular.
Yep.
Which, uh, which is terrific, so.
And then obviously detectives, there's a lot to read there, but, um. You know, they work with a lot of different agencies on investigations and narcotics investigations, um. They're extremely, um, busy. You know, we did several search warrants over the years that resulted in, um, seizure of a, a large quantities of. Uh, heroin, fentanyl, cocaine, um, a little bit of meth, which is. Something that we're starting to see more frequently here, um, which raises a whole different set of issues for us. With the meth labs and so forth. Um, if they, we start to see those. Um, they, those are very extremely dangerous situations. Um, obviously the fentanyl. Um, for our officers inhaling that, but the meth i- as well, um, officers can be seriously injured, burned or even killed. If they inhale it, um, or if they come upon a lab that explodes, um. It, it can be very dangerous, but that's something we're starting to see a little bit more of. That's concerning to us. And then, um, crisis intervention, community outreach, um. These are some of the, the numbers that, um, that we've had. I know you've seen these before. I think it was part of, um, some of the budget submissions. But it's, so our, uh, social worker that was working between us and Dedham promoted. So they're working, the new one is going through training, um, we expect to have them on site in the next week or so, um. But our officers have been taking over, um, but they've been working with our collaborative partners as, as well. Uh, with Riverside to address any issues or have any outreach, so we've kind of continued it, um, as, as best we can. But having this person in place, um, will make a huge difference too in our response and our follow-up.
John, could I just ask, so I was looking at this again, trying to remember what these different categories mean. So for example, under type of referral, if the, the vast majority of, um, instances were referred to the police. What does that kind of mean happened?
From, from, that's from, that's from the.
Are they referred from the police to Riverside or to the social worker? Okay. So it's a source.
Yeah.
Of referral might be a better description.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
And I think that, that, I think that kind of highlights what we're trying to do, that where, you know. In the past, we've taken care and just dropped them off the hospital and gone, but now we're reaching out, trying to make those connections and those, you know. Um, collaborative efforts to get the resources and work together as a team and criticism, uh, a part of the CCIT as well. That is, it's been something that's, um, been pretty in-depth. Um, and, and I think they've, they've done an unbelievable job and it's really transformed, um, how we respond to mental health. And how our officers respond and the training that they've had, it's been, um, it's been great going so far, so.
It's great, numbers bear it out, yeah, great.
So we could touch briefly on training, um, which is really one of the last areas. Um, sworn officer required by Massachusetts, uh, police training committee to complete. Trainings annually in two thousand twenty-one, Needham offices participate in the following trainings to satisfy this. Domestic terrorism, responding to pandemic and similar emergencies, implicit bias CPR, first responder. CPR, first responder practical, legal updates, defensive, defensive tactics and longevity in law enforcement. Um, a variety of use of force related trains were offered in two thousand twenty-one for our department, including Bolo wrap, remote restraint device. Spring firearms training, fall firearms training and TESA training. Um, and in all those trainings that we use, use of force, de-escalation is part of that training. Um, so you go through the levels of force, whether you escalate or de-escalate depending on the situation and the actions of the party that you're dealing with. We sent six additional officers to crisis intervention training, bring our total number of CIT trained officers to twenty-six. This means approximately fifty-six of our current sworn staff have attended forty hours of training geared towards. Better response to calls involving per- person suffering from mental illness. Um, we will continue to send personal personnel to this training when it becomes available. Usually we're only, we're only allotted two spots each year. Um, on occasion we get more, so we have that ability to do so, we do send more. Um, but I think, you know, most departments do not have the number of CIT trained officers that we do. Um, we, we, with the hopes that we can train everybody. In November, school resource officers, community outreach officer and the sergeant that oversees crisis intervention attended a course called. Mental health in the LGBTQ plus communities, put on by the Norfolk County Crisis Intervention Team Training. And the Technical Assistance Center, all officers and dispatches required to take sixteen hours of continuing ed. Um, we're participating, the agency in Metro Rec, it's a regional agency, has several specialized units that share personnel. Um, such as crisis negotiations, we have two, three crisis negotiators, uh, on our department. Um, search and rescue, SWAT, tactical response, cybercrime, we have two officers in the cybercrime unit. Mobile operations, um, which is motorcycles and bikes. And some of ours attended more advanced training, specific types of, such as sexual assault investigative training. Breaking and entering investigation, social, social media, auto theft investigations, basic death investigations. Fingerprints and ser- search warrant preparation. Um, in addition, the MPTC implicit bias course officers took, we held a training in the fall of two thousand twenty-one called Fair and Impartial Policing. The company, uh, Fair and Impartial Policing describes it courses, um. A, a provider of implicit bio-bias awareness training for law enforcement. State of the art, uh, training is about, really about how the mind works. Um, so that, that's really, in addition to those courses, the last, and our most recently posted sergeants to. A forty-hour frontline supervisor training in the spring. And the two lieutenants attended a forty-hour internal affairs investigation training. And, um, our officers which trained in LiDAR, which is basically a, a radar. But it's, it's a light activated radar for speed enforcement.
Mary Ann?
We're on the, um, sort of on the SROs, we're, we're still thinking about that. Um, because of the work that we're doing in the cops and community conversation, I had taken a look at the MOU. With the police and then I realized that there's a model MOU that's available now from the state. It looks like the last time. We negotiated the MOU might have been sort of around the same time that the model was.
So we just, myself and Dan just, um, executed. So we just, myself and Dan just executed an MOU, I wanna say beginning of the school year. And I just sent, uh, Dan yesterday. We got a model, uh, SRO policy from the Post Commission. So we updated the one that we just did six months ago with additional language from the sample of the post, and I sent that off to Dan. We just got that last week, so I sent it off to Dan, uh, just yesterday.
Interesting, great, because there were a couple of things that I noticed were just either a slight difference in the tone and the language or certain other provisions that seemed like they were consistent with things that we were doing, but would be valuable to include there, so I'm glad that.
Yeah, we kinda took a guess back in the early fall, what was gonna come out from post and try to add it, so we'd have the most up-to-date, knowing that we most likely would be changing it at some point, and we're at the point now where we're changing it based on the model policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments from the board?
Is there any data about like interventions, arrests, or anything of what?
So we do, so we are, I, we are looking at that for that, the conversation with cops in the community. We'll have to break it down because a lot of the make sure, I, I don't think there's many that actually happen in the school, but diversion. They go to diversion on criminal charges, so I have that broken down. We'll have to go back in and see if, you know, those happen in school, which I, they might have been a couple, but there is a connection obviously to the school because they're students, but. Okay, we can break that down as, as best we can.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, just with the, um, so the implicit bias course the officers took, that was all the officers that took that course?
Correct.
And then the, the sergeants that took the forty-hour frontline supervisor training, did they come in turn and their facilitators now to the rest of the officers, or how does that work?
This is more lead, the leadership training for frontline supervisors to provide them with skills necessary to to lead people, to supervise other people on, on the job. So if, it's not something that they would bring back to the department because it's really specific to the frontline supervisor sergeant position.
Got it. And then the same thing for the two lieutenants that did the, uh, internal affairs.
Yeah, cuz it, they'll, so they'll, I've had the training myself, um, but they're the ones that'll be doing the investigation, so it's specific to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of material, and this is not just this one report, but you've been basically building up to this every sixty days during the last year, so yeah. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. And Chief, I want to thank you for your leadership and Deputy Chief Baker for your leadership. This really highlights how, you know, how great our department is and what you've done and, and moved forward, not just stayed stagnant with training and everything else that you've done and putting these numbers together, I think paints a picture. So I want to thank you for all your work, all your officers and thank you, and we look forward to this, I guess, annually.
I, I think, you know, it's a good thing to see, I think it's really a good thing for us too, to kind of give us a look into how, what we're doing and how we're doing it, and if there are changes that can be made in the best interest of you know, our officers and, and the community we serve, I think it's, it's, it's been beneficial for us as well.
So one of the things that's, that's interesting to me that I don't know how I would extract from this number, but I think it's part of the challenge, right, is often, as you've said to us, it can be one person, but they show up in multiple places, right? And what we don't have a sense of here is actually how many people were involved. Okay, so we look at them in all these different categories, but we could be looking at the same person five times. Depending on how it's sliced and diced, and I'm not sure, not sure how we extracted up to that, but that's one of the things that I'm thinking about as I've looked at this, just trying to understand what it all means.
We see the slots, but not.
Right, yeah, unique, right, it's a unique participant kind of a thing.
So this is draft three, is it draft four?
Next year.
No, 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 three eighteen twenty twenty, it's a day.
No, no draft, oh, I gotcha.
With that, good night. Thank you again. Sorry for the delay in the agenda.
Sorry to keep Dan late on his last.
Town manager report.
First item is to ask the board to approve and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town and the Needham Fire Union. We reached agreement with the fire union for the current year and the prior year. This is a successor agreement that will bring us up to current and will continue to negotiate with the, the union. It is a wage increase of three percent in twenty-one, which was consistent with other unions in twenty-one, two percent in twenty-two, similar. Some small items of fire inspector certification stipend, which is only a cup, uh, two individuals who could apply for that. The Juneteenth holiday, which as you know, is one of our priorities. Increase in the detail rate and a, a number of language changes that have had to do with the fact that the fire union schedule has in, in the history of the fire service been on a forty-two hour week, and we have several employees who are now working a forty-hour week, so we had to do a lot of changes to make sure that everything is in alignment with who's on forty and who's on forty-two. It looks like a lot, but it really is just a bit of housekeeping, so I'd ask the board to approve that agreement, and then if you would, we would bring it to town meeting and to the Finance Committee and Personnel Board for their action.
Great, thank you. Is there motion at the board to approve and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town and the Needham Fire Union Local seventeen oh six for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
So a second. Motion and made, second, any discussion? I just don't know who's gonna present this, Dan, with you, this says your name written all over at a town meeting, but you'll, you'll be there, okay. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye, that is unanimous.
Good piece of work.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the TripAdvisor forbearance Agreement that we deferred from the last meeting. I would ask the board to approve and authorize me to sign it. I thought I would provide a little bit of background, if that makes sense. So in December of twenty twelve, uh, town meeting by majority vote approved the creation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan for TripAdvisor. And I would note that it was amended in May thirteen because, May twenty thirteen because of changes to the size of the building, which, um, and, and that agreement was approved by unanimous vote at town meeting. So the, the tax increment financing is, is an increment. It's, uh, the, the tax exemption that's provided to an entity that's determined to be of a significant value to bring into the community for economic development. The increment is only provided to the amount that's above, um, the tax that was in place at the time, so it's, it's an increment. The taxing and finance deal that we're talking about, um, from TripAdvisor is a thirteen-year agreement. There was seventy-six percent exemption for five years and a one percent exemption for eight, so we're, we're in that one percent re- realm now. About a year ago, TripAdvisor informed us that they did not meet the required seven hundred jobs that they needed to create or relocate to Needham as part of their agreement. This is a, the, the job creation is a state portion of the mandate, um, that is included in our TIF agreement. And they knew at the time that they were not going to be able to meet the December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, seven hundred job target either. We don't have that report yet, um, but they had told us that they weren't gonna make it. So, um, my intent in creating this forbearance agreement, working with TripAdvisor and Town Council was to create a record of that non-compliance so that the, the community had that record. And to determine whether there was an appropriate consideration for the town, um, based on the fact that the jobs were not moved here or created here. We, we all know that the COVID nineteen pandemic moved a lot of people's jobs a lot of places, and it wasn't even necessarily that they weren't at this location, it was that that maybe not even in Massachusetts. I mean, and that was true for, for lots of industries. So just so it's clear, the, the twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty report, in which there were not the seven hundred jobs, affects the FY twenty-two, um, tax levy, which is the year that we're in now. And so because of there's a one percent exemption for TripAdvisor in twenty twenty-two, their tax was exempted, the pop, they didn't pay was seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars. And for the twelve thirty twenty-one report, um, which we don't have, but we know is not gonna meet the target. The tax exemption for twenty, will be for twenty twenty-three, is at eighteen. I have these years backwards, uh, seventeen, seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-three for, um, twenty-one and eighteen thousand for seven hundred, eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six for twenty twenty-two. So, um, again, those are the amounts that they're exempt from paying. They did pay the ninety-nine, they were billed and paying the ninety-nine percent, and I just wanted to give you a sense that that for both twenty-one and twenty-two, the real estate tax bill for TripAdvisor is in excess of two million, uh, two point one million. And so that's the amount that we did receive, as opposed to the seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand that we did not. In addition, um, TripAdvisor, uh, paid in twenty-one and twenty-two about three hundred thousand, plus or minus three hundred thousand in, in personal property tax, and there's no exemption on the personal property tax. So I, uh, the important statement here is that TripAdvisor was not released from any tax payment due to this forbearance agreement that we're recommending to you. And that they're full in compliance with the payment provisions of the TIF. Again, the seven hundred and seventy jobs that were not created or relocated to Needham. We negotiated with TripAdvisor that they would provide some benefit to the town. The most notable is a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to the Needham Public Schools. And this is, um, for scholarships for school-related travel, and this is something that they had done in the past, and it was very much appreciated by the schools because there are there are always students who have a hard time participating in those programs for financial reasons. There are other, a few other items that, um, TripAdvisor agreed to do, including, um, allowing us to host events at the TripAdvisor Building, which we have, uh, we will be, I'm sure, hearing people request, and also, um, speakers for training programs for staff. So, um, as you know, it's been suggested that the forbearance agreement should be, uh, brought to town meeting for a vote. I don't think it's necessary. Town Council has opined that the board's action is within its authority. We certainly could ta- notify town meeting members if that's something the board wanted to do. But I, 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 I know that many people are fully understanding of the forbearance agreement, but I think other people may have had the impression that there was, um, a tax obligation that we had relieved TripAdvisor of, which again, is not the case. And in my view, uh, Mr. Chairman recommending this, is that TripAdvisor is an important and valued institution here in Needham. It was founded here, and it was headquartered here, the world headquarters, it was an anchor of part of our redevelopment and other, um, tech companies that are locating in Needham Crossing. We've been working closely with them, um, to, to ensure that they remain a viable institution in town, and so I do recommend that the board approve and authorize me to sign the forbearance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? I know there was some discussion prior to our meet, or during the first part of our meeting, uh, citizens' comments on this issue, um, discussion.
Well, I know Mister, Mister Chairman, and you're the chairman, so this is just my question. Chairman of the Finance Committee, I, has taken the time to sit here through the whole meeting for this. If he wants, if, I just assume if, although I'm not sure we're gonna come to any agreement, if there's something else to be said, that he would have an opportunity to say it or ask it.
And I don't know, has the Finance Committee, Mr. Lee, taken a position on this? So I know you came as a town meeting member, is that correct? Thank you for that. I guess the way I look at this, and I understand the, the question, can you go before town meeting and have this ratified? I've received some emails on this, I bet people have here as well, and I think what got conflated was the amount, as we talk about the taxes due, and the benefits that we receive. So in one column, the taxes that are going to be due, that we're saying, you know, you don't have to pay your full amount of taxes, you have that one percent that you don't have to pay, the seventeen thousand and the eighteen thousand, we're saying you still have to pay it, okay? That, there's no question to ask. On the other column, they're saying, you know what, we have, we have this great agreement, but we cannot meet our obligations for you know, employees coming to work. I actually, the travel business I thought was going to just go, and I did for a while completely south, and I assume they laid a lot of people off and they weren't able to occupy this building, and there, there were some issues there. And so they're in violation of the agreement because that was one of the items for consideration, and correct me if I'm wrong, yeah. Okay, so instead we say, okay, you can't meet that obligation, but let's start negotiating something and we'll allow that to happen. And what we did, you know, the twenty-five thousand in scholarships, uh, to continue the speakers and hosting events, um, I think, you know, on balance is something where we say that is a fair trade during this time of COVID. Um, and of course, you will get back to where you need to be at the end of the day. I think with an agreement like this, we, or I know with an agreement like this, we have the flexibility as a town to sign it. And I think there's a lot more predictability if we have that flexibility to sign it without having to go to town meeting and have them you know, acknowledge it and ratify it. Um, I think it would be bad press in for us to do. I think if it did involve the financial, uh, agreement or arrangement that we originally had, I think that'd be completely valid. But because it involves these, these add-ins that are incredibly important, and that the state actually mandated, I think we have the authority, since we have the authority to sign it, I think that we should sign it, and I think it gives predictability. And, uh, we can, you know, people are interested in, uh, the summary of what we did, I'm happy to provide that. So that's where I'm at as far as that type of ratification. Uh, Mary Ann?
So I just wanna clarify something that wasn't clear, I think as you said it. TripAdvisor is paying two point one million dollars annually in, in property taxes. They, they're, the incentive that we gave them was the credit for the seventeen five forty-three. So to some extent, you could almost look at the seventeen five forty-three and eighteen seven seventy-six. That by giving us these twenty-five thousand dollar contributions for Needham Public Schools, that those might in fact be considered an offset. At this point, if we're looking at the whole package to the town, all right? But, but certainly I would say TripAdvisor is a valued community member. All of us understand why they did not have that number of employees working in that building in Needham during the pandemic. So, so that's certainly very true, but fundamentally, I would also say that I agree with you, that the notion that you change governance because some things of interest or people would like to vote on it is not, I think, a good habit to undertake. I, I do think we should be, and we are sitting here having a conversation fully about this, um, in public. So certainly the public will understand what we've done in working with TripAdvisor, that we recognize that they could not have all their employees working in Needham, and they have continued to pay fully to the town, their taxes that they owed. And we appreciate that, we appreciate them continuing as a member of our community, and I would support, um, the town manager signing the forbearance agreement.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Further discussion, Kevin? Oh, Marcus.
So I listening to and, and kind of taking that all in, it, it all makes sense and an agreement in which everybody's saying. So I, I don't have a hesitancy, but I, I would say in the, in the case of maybe not going to town meeting, but informing them would be a good idea, but also having the, the FinCom. I know that I have a position right now with just understanding, you know, if they had more dialogue and discussion and come to I, I just go back to this being on the consent agenda like it was eventually, then we took it off after, you know, we recognized or made aware that more discussion needed to be had for this, and I feel like in the essence of transparency, if we, um, depending on, you know, when the next FinCom meeting is, the discussion or position that they're able to take. And I think would be just, um, beneficial for us to kind of understand from their standpoint, what exactly this would be, um, for the town. But I, I understand that everything that has been said and the reason that we've done what we, we are doing makes sense. And that TripAdvisor is such a trusted partner within our town, and that all makes perfect sense, but I'm just trying to make sure that as being the government that we are, that we have a trusted voice, you know, like FinCom, having that discussion and having a position doesn't even go to town meeting, but I think having, you know, having their input on this wouldn't be a bad thing.
And I, I guess I would say, from having watched the tape, it looks like FinCom, when they had the discussion, they did not have all the information. And I think that was unfortunate that evening, but, um, you know, so I think they were concerned about a number of things that they made assumptions about that proved to be incorrect.
So for that meeting, now they have all the information, so that's.
I think they'll have another discussion with all the information, right?
Well, I think that, you know, Finance Committee has someone who sat as in was chair, right? And we can disagree maybe with this, but you know, it's the, the financial impact to the town, which when we're looking at this is not the issue. Is not impacted, so it's really the conditions, and people might have input on it, but it's really up to this board to say, here's our position. Town meeting gave us the authority, and, uh, you know, we have an agreement in front of us that I think needs to be executed for that reason. I bet Finance Committee might take it up maybe later and have a discussion on it, but I think it's not going to go to town meeting, or I would prefer not to go to town meeting. And for that reason, I think I would, I want to vote on this and, and, and move forward. If there was, like I said, a financial impact or position that, you know, this, we're waiving these, the fees or saying what they don't have to pay it, that'd be a different discussion. Town meeting gave us the authority to sign this for a reason, and I think it gives us that flexibility to do so. But I'll be happy to listen to Dan.
Yeah, the, you know, we all want, we have a volunteer government with hundreds of people that participated, and it's complicated. They're not a dozen contracts a year, hundreds of contracts a year. There are thousands of contracts a year. And we want people to be informed, but we've got a high-velocity business that has to operate with the staffing and bandwidth that's available to deal with it. So sometimes, maybe information could have been gotten to some people in some ways in a little better form. This may be such a case. I mean, every, there's, certainly, people know that the TripAdvisor contract is a big contract for the town. But on the other hand, this particular waiver has to do with what is really a very small issue, and it's the kind of thing that makes sense for the select board to just deal with. Because in that, in the context of all of that velocity and the work that has to get done, we have an obligation to have fair business relationships with companies that are, are, are based here in town to try to resolve any issues that occur simply and fairly. And when you, and the basic analysis is that although the TripAdvisor contract is a big complicated thing because it's attached to a big complicated state program, the town's piece is very straightforward. In order to, to facilitate an attractive development that was good for the business and very good for the town, the town waived a certain number of property tax payments, most of which has already gone out. We're down to the one percent per year level now in exchange for getting a lot more money later, which we are also getting now. And although there is the problem about the COVID dislocations and the number of people that working in the building at this time, and that could concern state agencies, and they could take action if they didn't feel TripAdvisor had done what it was supposed to do. But I never, don't, I don't believe that that's so. But that's on the state's side of the equation. The town's side of the equation is, is this business honoring the obligations that it made to the town about paying the prior property tax? And the answer is yes. So it is, there is no adverse impact to the town, and the rest of it is, is really one of, one of many kinds of, different kinds of regulatory environments that don't directly impact the towns, the work of the town government. So it makes sense, in order to be fair to the business, in order to resolve these kinds of decisions in a, in a reasonable and prompt way, rather than have it go around the town meeting cycle and eat up bandwidth of the people that have to do the, the preparations and work with the committees and everything else. If this can be solved at this level, it should be. I believe the answer to that question is yes. So I'm completely in favor of this, in terms of if there are members of the Finance Committee that are concerned about this, can we have further discussion? I have no problem about that. They have a right to know what we're doing, and, and, and it's not a secret. And hopefully, they'll agree that it's our good judgment. But it is a decision that's properly vested here. So thank you.
And I just want to clarify, thank, thank you, Mark. I just want to clarify that this was put on the consent agenda. The chair sets the agenda. I didn't realize that this would be, you know, something, and it was, the questions had come from the Finance Committee, and great questions, and we did respond to the Finance Committee with those answers. So it's not like we're saying we don't, you really need to talk to the Finance Committee. The legitimate questions that we did answer, and I think at this point, we're ready to vote it. Kevin?
Be clear, there is no tax issue here. Okay, there's only about the seven hundred and seventy jobs. Okay, I'm sympathetic to issues of clarity that were made by people in the public comment stuff. But I'm happy when we didn't do this on the consent agenda. So I think this is the discussion, the clarity and the openness we all want. And I'm happy to have the select board vote for it, so I would do it.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. Is there a motion? That the board vote to approve and authorize the town manager to sign a forbearance agreement between the town and TripAdvisor? Is there such a motion?
Some of it.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Sure, I would add, I think it's a great point that things that end up on the consent agenda tend to be by staff thinking or staff with the chairs, and pulling something off the consent is always appropriate because we make a judgment, and it's not always the, you know, people have other questions. So I, I think that's a.
And that's why we did it.
Perfectly valid, yeah.
Thank you.
And we will be asking the board to close the warrant for the May ninth, twenty-twenty-two special town meeting, subject to minor technical corrections to be made by the town manager, town council, and bond council. Although, current time, I don't believe there's any bond council notice. What, what I am proposing here, Mr. Chair, is to move all of the collective bargaining together into the special town meeting from the annual because we needed a little bit more time with respect to seeing if we could settle all of these contracts. And we have included in the warrant a home war petition to exempt the police department from civil service, which is something that we're working towards and trying to reach agreement with our, with our police unions. And putting this on the special, first of all, the, the annual is closed. And second of all, just gives us that one extra week and a little bit of different posting requirements in order to see if we can reach that objective. So those are the changes. Otherwise, we are continuing to see whether there are FY twenty-two operating budget line item transfers that need to happen. We'll have that for you at your next meeting. And the planning board, I believe, is taking up the brewery next week. I think it's next week, the, the zoning for the brew pub. Yeah, I believe that's right. Unless they've done it already, we don't know either. So Monday, I believe.
Monday, okay.
Thank you, Katie.
A lot of people are interested in that topic, and rightfully so. Think it'll be a great addition, but otherwise, I got to knock on wood, this warrant looks pretty good. Speed-wise, I should say. Okay, so is there a motion that the board vote to close the warrant for the May ninth, twenty-twenty-two special town meeting, subject to minor technical corrections to be made by the town manager, town council, and bond council? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is just a discussion of the annual time meeting warrant so that the board continues to see the evolving drafts. Again, the collective bargaining has been removed from the annual, moved to the special. And it's our intent, the Finance Committee meets next Monday, the Wednesday, the thirtieth, to take its final position, so we'll include those. And the CPC meets on the thirtieth, and they, and at least, I believe, I understand that East Militia Heights article by the housing authority has been withdrawn. And the, we will, there is some conversation, the Parker Recreation Commission will be talking about the boat launch, and there may be others, can't speak for the CPC whether they will make recommendations to move all of those forward. So anything that they do not move forward, we'll take out of the warrant, take the numbers down. And we, as Miles has told me, noon on the next day, they will, it will be going to the printer. So that will be the absolute last time to make changes to the warrant.
That's right, Mary Ann?
Will the CPC numbers also reflect the money from the state? At least for the walk, as they're looking at rationalizing dollars at the end.
That ARPA?
So I guess it, it doesn't come out, it won't come out of CPC.
Correct, I mean, it would be, it would be included, yeah. That it would be, have been considered.
For that, yeah.
We had with, we had withdrawn Walker, so, but in terms of their long-term plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other item, Mr. Chair, maybe Ms. Cooley would like to talk about status of articles, or Mother Chair would, article assignments.
I wasn't planning to talk about that tonight.
Just that people may, we have opinions on what they want.
If you have a strong opinion about an article that you would like to talk about or a couple of articles you would like to talk about, you can certainly let me know. Otherwise, we will very shortly be discussing assignments for the articles.
Yes, we're still planning, unless something changes for the bond sale on April fifth, a, a short meeting. But we will let you know if that doesn't move forward, and then that would only be the bond sale or something very minor. And April thirteenth, we have, we have a very full schedule in April. As you know, April is a long, long meetings, although we're, we're, we're there in March, too. So we, we will have the Emory Grover project presentation, and I believe the citizens' petitioner are also on that.
Okay. Back to them by fire for the new member, and.
Yeah. That's going to be some.
Yes. And the, oh, going to.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do all the articles of the consent agenda.
Okay.
That's good, that's good, I like it. Yes, I like it. We'll come in, we'll call you the chair apparent, is that right? Send it to the chair apparent, your, your suggestions.
The traditional role of the vice chair to.
Right.
At the last meeting of the year.
Correct, and also, as we said earlier, any, any articles that you would like a formal presentation on?
Oh, yes, please, soon.
Okay, that was discussion only, town manager report?
Just a couple more things. Wanted to give you an update on the farmer's market and the tent. So if people haven't been following, the farmer's market is moving to Greensfield for this summer because the common will be closed for renovations. They'll be on the southwest corner using the paved paths. June twelfth, they're opening. And Miles would like to thank the Parker Recreation and the planning board for helping permits. Miles is in charge of helping with that permitting. Also, Miles is in charge of working on the tent on the southeast corner of Greensfield, closer to the Y. We're planning to put up a tent, hopefully, in the middle of April so that the tent that, like the one that was on the common, will move over to Greensfield. We're working to see if that we can have some kind of decking underneath it, so, because it will be on the grass.
I was gonna ask that.
Yeah.
I was like, Ed, I was like, you better talk to Ed about that.
Ed is on the committee.
All right, just making sure.
We're also planning to put the two parklets that we have on Pickering. It's actually a great location for them, and it will be a natural with the farmer's market and the tent being there in terms of having those parklets there. We're working on new umbrellas because the umbrellas were not the favorite. And so those were, those will be put out there.
When'd you say the opening day was?
For the farmer's market?
Yeah.
The twelfth, June twelfth.
I was gonna, which twelfth?
April fifteenth is the plus or minus date.
Okay, great. Could you, I, I received comments by a couple of businesses around the common of, as far as the renovation in concern about traffic and construction and how that's going to affect their businesses directly surrounding those blocks. Could we just make sure to reach out?
Absolutely.
Because some of them weren't aware, and I know we did notify, just something, there must have been a mix up, but.
Amy will be walking around anyway.
I know she will. I just want to make sure they, they understand what the impact will be and how long.
Yeah, outreach is part of our plan, but it's a great idea to involve Amy, thank you for that, yeah. Second, just a reminder that the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day is at eleven-thirty start at Sunset Road on the twenty-ninth, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, right? Svalo, yep, Svalo and Sunset, near the new to Williams School. There'll be an invocation, a wreath laying, speakers and taps, and a benediction. So if people want to go, there is limited parking there, so if you can walk.
And I'll be speaking as well for the board, so.
Thank you. The last item is that, just to let the board know, another addition to the April thirteenth is you may, you may know there was another incident with a dog from the dog hearing that we had previously, the most recent dog hearing that we updated you on, and the board voted on training requirements. And so we have put the, we are in the process of putting the resident on notice that we'll be scheduling a dog hearing for that night, so that is moving forward. Very unfortunate.
I'm very unfortunate, horrible. And that's all? Okay, great. Next item on the agenda, committee reports.
I did have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Noted that our, our climate action group has met and has gotten underway on its work, and that's really impressive. And something that had kind of been come to my attention, just listening to the radio or the press or whatever is, you know, gas prices are way up because of a lot of things that have happened, some of them pretty bad. But in all of the talk about, well, what could we possibly do about this? I never, I hear very few people say, well, why don't we just drive less? And I guess I'd like to just say that, since we're here on town-wide TV. When I say that, I recognize that everybody's situation is different. There may be an individual whose livelihood, their individual's livelihood depend on driving one way to a job that you can only get to fifty miles and back by themselves. That's all they can do. But most people have more flexibility in their situations. They might be able to carpool with people that are proximate to them one or two days a week or take public transportation, or even for those of us that aren't traveling great distances, feel a little more planful in the way that we, that we chart our errands around town and so on. Gasoline prices are very sensitive to short-term swings in supply and demand. And if locally, regionally, nationally, people decided, yes, let's engage in this, it really, at the very least, they'd save a few bucks. It would help the environment, because remember, this is a goal that we have long-term anyway. And if, and in the best world, it might even help us a little bit in the world situation. I'm not saying that that would happen, but clearly, it, it is a small action which is in, within a lot of people's control, and if we act together, common good, we may all benefit. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, you know. One thing I'm noticing, you know, the price of petroleum, it's affecting everything, especially in the construction industry as well. Shingles just went up twenty-five percent, and then latest, and anything involving, you know, oil and petroleum. So it's, it's going to be a tough road ahead for many, many people. But thank you for your suggestion, Mr. Matthews. Any further discussion? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, is there a motion? Mr. Matthews, can you please provide the motions as I close my book?
I know, you're right. A motion to, under exception three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting might have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares, and I.
And I do so declare.
And exception six, to consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the, of public body.
I do declare.
And not to return to open session prior to adjournment.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Matthews. Is there a second? Thank you, Marcus. Roll call vote, Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin? Chair is yes. Thank you, good night, everybody.